Yes. Okay, I'd like to start this evening meeting, call it to order of January 21st, 2025. If you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. You ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, if we can have real call. Council?
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Kerriaco?
Here.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tempore Kasdan?
Here.
And Mayor Perotti?
Here. Okay, I'd like to introduce our Spanish translation. Translator?
Good evening, everybody. Buenos dias. Tenemos interpretación simultánea disponible entre el inglés y el español para esta reunión. Si gustarían participar, escuchar en español, déjame saber. Tengo unos auriculares disponibles para que lo puedan hacer. So, good evening. We have simultaneous interpretation available between Spanish and English. So if you'd like to follow along in Spanish, please let me know. I have some listening devices available for you to do so. At any point, if you would like to participate in this manner, if you have any questions, I'll be available in the back rooms. Si en cualquier momento tengan alguna pregunta o dudas y en algún momento deciden participar de esta manera, estaré disponible acá atrás en la puerta. Pueden tocar. Y con eso, gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Rosen, can we have a report from closed session, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, for the one closed session item that was read into the record at 4:30 p.m., there is no reportable action.
Thank you so much. At this time, we'll have public forum. Anybody wishes to speak to you, anything that's not on our agenda this evening and within the jurisdictions of the city. Do we have any speakers?
Madam Mayor, I have two speaker slips, and if any members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. Our first speaker in person is Eva Inbar.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. I've come to speak to you about the man that was hit by a car and killed in Golita Old Town, Ricardo Hernandez is his name, on Christmas Eve. He was hit trying to cross Hollister Avenue at Magnolia Avenue. Now, there was another man hit and killed by a car in that same place, at Magnolia Avenue, trying to get across Hollister in 2003, on August 29th. His name was Victor Lamas. He was 81 years old, and he was on his morning walk. Now, that makes two people being killed in that same place. There was once a crosswalk there at Magnolia, and the county, in their wisdom, took it out. That was when the county still was providing traffic engineering services to the new city of Golita in 2000. And the traffic engineer in charge at the time was Rob Eaton. Some of you may remember him. They have the theory that it was safer for pedestrians to cross without a crosswalk. Now, we have two dead people here. That theory obviously didn't work too well, and has generally been discredited and is not being used anymore. The city of Golita has done a lot of good work with crosswalks, making them safer. I really think you've done a great job on Hollister Avenue, on Cali Real, and other places. And I would urge you to do it here, too. We have two dead people now. That's enough. Put in a crosswalk, zebra striped, high visible, with good night lighting and some flashing beacons, please. Thank you.
Thank you. You know we can't respond because it's not on the agenda. I think you know that, okay? But we hear you. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Alex Adan.
Hello. I'm a restaurant owner, and I have been in Santa Barbara since I was a toddler. I don't really know anything about Mexico because I've never been there. All my family is here in Santa Barbara. My family doesn't have any legal status, and I'm too old to qualify for DACA. As a business owner, I am so worried about Trump's first 100 days. My birth family is not worried to even go out shop and do anything except for go to work and school. My business donates to Casa de la Raza because of our safe space of our community, and Casa de la Raza is my home, too. Running a business is not easy, but it provides for my employees, and my small little business also provides for Casa de la Raza. I don't know what I'll do if I ever get stopped by ICE. Don't know what happened if my restaurant or to my employees. So we all wait for you at Casa de la Raza. We have a meeting this Saturday afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there are no additional public speakers.
All right, thank you. Amendments or adjustments to our agenda? Mr. Nisbet, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are no adjustments or amendments to the agenda tonight, but I can jump right into our City Manager's report if you like.
I would like that.
And we do have two listed items tonight that I will have short staff presentations on. And the first one is on AB 413. It's known as California's Daylighting Law. This law prohibits parking within 20 feet of any marked or unmarked crosswalk at intersections. And we did see this law coming. It was actually passed a year ago, and there was a year grace period. So we did see it coming last year. Then it was kind of silent all year. Everyone kind of forgot about it. And then, over the holidays, as January 1st approached, I did start reading about it. Other cities were talking about it, and we did start getting some feedback or questions from members of the community, kind of, whoa, what's this new law? We'd never heard of it. One person in particular who is here tonight, Ms. Judith Serena, her and I exchanged emails over the holidays. She had concerns and very good questions, I would say, questions that I did not know the answers to. So over the holidays, I did send some emails out to my staff, hey, we got to get ready for this. Maybe we make a short presentation. So our staff did make a very nice graphic that I think shows very well how the law works and why it's a nice safety feature. And so I'm glad that Ms. Serena showed up tonight. Appreciate you showing up. So we did put out a press release kind of in advance of this item, but the idea was that we'd make a short presentation, what we know about the law, how we're going to handle it, what it means, what it doesn't mean, and then also, of course, you know, what our approach will be to enforcing it. So we do have Andrew Fuller here tonight to make a short presentation. We also have Sergeant Rivas here, who can answer questions. And so with that, I'll turn it over to the Public Works staff.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nisbet. Share my screen. All right. Good evening, Mayor Perotti and councilmembers. My name is Andrew Fuller. I'm the Principal Engineer for the Transportation and Development Engineering Division within Public Works. I'm here tonight to give a brief update on a new state law that impacts parking in Golita. I'll cover a little bit of the background and the intent behind the law. And then we have Sergeant Rivas here with the Sheriff's Department. We'll speak to the enforcement of the law. So Assembly Bill 413, or AB 413, modifies the California Vehicle Code, Section 22500, and understand it's a mouthful, but I'll try to get through it quickly. That states, "A person shall not stop, park, or leave standing any vehicle, whether attended or unattended, except when necessary to avoid conflict with other traffic or in compliance with the directions of a peace officer or official traffic control device in any of the following places." And that new place included in this update is within 20 feet of the vehicle approach side of any marked or unmarked crosswalk, or within 15 feet of any crosswalk where a curb extension is present. So we've put together a few exhibits that are, you know, fairly simple diagrams in an attempt to illustrate the implications of this law. It does not cover every single instance, but gives the kind of the general guidelines around it. So here you can see, at a marked crosswalk at an intersection, the left-hand side would be before AB 13 went into effect, and the right-hand side would show those parking restrictions after AB 13. So you can see on that right-hand side, we have that orange hatched area measured 20 feet back from the marked crosswalk, where there would no longer be allowed parking. I'll go to the next one. Parking at an unmarked crosswalk. So we're measuring that 20 feet back from, we call it the curb return, or where, you know, that curb line changes from relatively straight to turning around the intersection, measuring 20 feet back from there. And then, at curb extensions, and so what curb extensions do is extend the sidewalk out into the street a little bit. That reduces the amount of distance that a pedestrian has to cross the street in the traveled way. And so in this instance, with this new state law, you would measure 15 feet back from the crosswalk. And so these new restrictions, the aim is to increase safety at intersections by improving the visibility of pedestrians crossing the street. And according to the California Bike Coalition, who is a co-sponsor of the legislation, approximately 25% of traffic fatalities nationwide occur around intersections. And in California, the pedestrian death rate is nearly 25% higher than the national average. And so there have already been, at least 40 states have implemented similar legislation prior to AB 413, and they've already noted a decrease in reported collisions. And so this last exhibit, I think, really helps show the intent of the law here. So you can see, on the left-hand side, you have a vehicle parked right up next to the crosswalk. And on the right-hand side, you know, you see the vehicle just in a dashed outline, but you can see what you would be missing when cars are parked right up next to the crosswalk. And that would be the same for, you know, in this instance, crossing the street you're on, or maybe crossing that side street, but if you're about to make a right turn, you may not realize that somebody's in the crosswalk. So that kind of demonstrates the intent of the law, and that is all about pedestrian visibility and increasing safety around intersections. And so the city of Golita is committed to enhancing traffic safety, and this new law is just another step toward our Vision Zero goal of eliminating traffic-related fatalities and serious injuries. And as Mr. Nisbet mentioned, over the last final weeks of 2024, the Sheriff's Department was out placing warnings on cars to alert people to the coming changes, and they issued over 150 warnings to inform people of the changes that were to take effect on January 1st of this year. As Mr. Nisbet mentioned, the law was started in 2024, but starting in 2025, or when citations will begin being issued. And so the Sheriff's Department has begun issuing citations this year just to ensure that these safety measures are effectively implemented. And with that, I'll pass it to Sergeant Rivas, who can provide a little more details on the enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
Madam Mayor and esteemed members of council, ladies and gentlemen. So the best thing that we would like to inform the public is to be educated with regards to this. We don't want to go out there and start writing a bunch of tickets. And actually, the citations that have been written have only been issued so far by our parking enforcement officer. In a perfect world, every intersection that's affected by this, we would love to see a red curb. But that's just, I mean, that'll be a daunting task to go out and hit every intersection and paint that curb red. So Mr. Fuller showed several images up there with regards to how we would be enforcing that. I made several copies of that, and so if and when I issue a citation for that violation, I will put a copy of that diagram so the person knows why they're being cited. Also, we, in my back, I carry a spray can, and I will actually roll off 20 feet, and I'll mark it for future reference in case I have to go back to that intersection. Again, we just want to inform the public whether they're issuing citations. And so at this point, none of my traffic officers have issued any tickets for this violation, but we have issued some since the beginning of the year. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have with regards to our enforcement posture on this.
I do see some questions. Councilmember Kerriaco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for being here. Thank you, everyone. You know, before I ask a question, I just kind of want to maybe throw up something kind of adjacent. So I believe our staff kind of got ahead of this a little bit when we did our most recent parking study, which then positioned us for when we did the interim striping project. I'm wondering if our City Manager or someone from Public Works could talk a little bit about some of the changes we made on Hollister that resulted in additional red curb at intersections along the Hollister corridor in Old Town, that if the city had just done that absent of the interim striping project, I think we would have had a net reduction in parking spaces. Can we just have someone come up and talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I can answer that. So we did with the interim striping project in Old Town, there are a number of red curbs that were added along that stretch as a part of that project.
Including at Magnolia, I believe, on the south side and on the north side.
Correct. And so those red curbs were established based on safe sight distance for cars pulling out into the intersection. And so that's something, you know, even in hindsight, you know, we went back, and those were all, you know, more conservative than this daylighting law. And so it's, you know, something we verified there. Those red curbs weren't placed because of this daylighting law, but similar, you know, for a similar purpose of safe sight distances. And so a lot of the red curbs you'll see are much longer than 20 feet along there. So, you know, especially with the angled parking that pushes it further out into the street. You know, we were putting those in, you know, with a similar, similar vision for safe sight distance. Before interim striping went into effect, we had about 69 parking spaces along that stretch of Hollister. And kind of in a hindsight review, we probably would have lost around six or about 10% of those parking spaces due to this new daylight law. With the interim striping, we have the 88 spaces out there right now, so we're in a much better spot today.
So instead of losing 10% of our parking in that Old Town business corridor, we added 40%?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that. So the reason why I asked that question is because I just, I think that, I think it's important that we recognize that while there's been some consternation in our community about some of the changes that have happened on the Hollister corridor, safety really was core and fundamental to those changes. And so being able to go beyond the daylighting rules from a visibility standpoint, including in an area that historically has had some real challenging pedestrian crossing, as was pointed out by Ms. Inbar earlier, I think it's important to note that our staff, God bless them, they've been really taking safety seriously and trying to do everything they can. And to Mr. Rivas, I would just say, thank you for the work that you and your team are doing. And I know you don't want to write those tickets, and I know that unfortunately, they will probably disproportionately affect some of our community members, that we don't want to make their lives harder. Anything you can do to kind of use warnings and encouragement as opposed to, you know, ticketing, I would encourage you, but you have to follow the law, and I respect that.
Absolutely. And if I could just comment something that Ms. Inbar brought up, and with all due respect to Ms. Inbar, we have only had one fatality at that intersection. The other one occurred at Orange. That was in 2001.
It was right by the barber shop.
Yes. And in this last fatality, in our investigation, we have determined that the roadway design did not contribute to the crash. We're still trying to determine fault. But I want the city to know that that diagram, the way it was done, did not contribute to the intersection, to the fatality. We did make a recommendation to our engineering department, but that's kind of where we're at, and it's unfortunate. It's why it's called an accident. It wasn't a planned event. And, but, you know, yeah, our main purpose with regards to this law is to make sure that the public is educated. That's why we went out and issued over 150 warnings to people, and those people were calling, and they were obviously upset. And we advised them that this is a law that's been, you know, on the books since 2024, and then now that we're going to start enforcing it. But again, we do not want to go out and write hundreds of tickets for this violation. We want people to know. And the tickets that were issued by our parking enforcement officer have been the ones that have been really egregious, like out into the intersection. So we're even giving some of the people who are breaking that 20-foot rule a little bit of a warning as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kasdan?
Mayor Pro Temp, Kasdan? Thank you.
Whoops.
Oh, my. There are certain areas that we know are already heavily congested as far as parking and parking scarce, and I assume where it's been an issue, and this will, in often cases, exacerbate it. And so I guess I'd, you know, one solution is, in some areas, we have something like a permit program. Everyone gets two permits for cars, and if there are some households that are parking five cars or something like that, they would have, they might have to get rid of or do something with it. And I guess I'm not proposing we do anything now. I'm just proposing we keep an eye, you know, and record and so forth where there might be areas where we have to come up with a new policy, where we have to think through some sort of, you know, improvement. Because I can think of some areas where, you know, I don't know what they're going to do, losing these parking spaces, but we'll probably have to do something. And so just, you know, I don't know who the best audience is, but to keep in mind, we'll have to, this will probably be only the first step.
I agree. And, you know, and I would say that you are absolutely correct. We have areas where we know that parking is, you know, very, very tough there. So maybe in those particular areas, those are the areas that we maybe have painted red, so then it's pretty, it's obvious that the violation is going to be there. So, but I know that the city of Santa Barbara has neighborhoods where you need a permit to park there. I'm not advocating that, but I'm not sure if that's something the city would want to look at.
Yeah, I'm not advocating for any policies right now. You know, when the time comes, we'll explore it, but at least, you know, all the different alternatives. But at least if we can start figuring out if we have a problem and where those problems are, and then take it up. Thank you.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Thank you. My question is for staff. I was trying to write notes while you were sharing your introduction, so I want to make sure I have this right. The data points you mentioned, 25% of, is it pedestrian fatalities? Can you repeat that?
Councilmember Reyes Martin, yes. It's approximately 25% of all traffic fatalities nationwide occur around intersections. And then the death rate in California for pedestrians is nearly 25% higher than the national average.
Wow, thank you. And then you mentioned a number of states that had already implemented a similar law. What was that number?
Yeah, more than 40.
40. So we're catching up quite significantly. I wondered, I was like, did he say four or 40? Okay, thank you.
Do we have any public would like to speak to this?
Madam Mayor, I do not have any speaker slips for this item, but if there are any members of the Zoom webinar who wish to speak, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. I don't see any hands raised.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks. Thanks for everything you do out there.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to announce one kind of related item, because we don't do ribbon cuttings for these type of projects, but we do have a new traffic signal that's operational in the city of Golita now. It's at the intersection of Glen Stork and Whittier. You might have even gone right through there and stopped, and it felt like it was always there, but it is new, and it's definitely making that intersection safer. So I think we now have 35 traffic signals or something like that. One of these gentlemen probably keeps count of those things. But that did go in, and I noticed it's operational now. Madam Mayor, we would recommend at this point that if we could take a short break, I'm hearing that there's a piece of equipment that needs to be rebooted, and it should only take like three or four minutes, but we would prefer to have that fixed before we go on to the next update.
Take a brief break. Okay, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. That was the quickest break we've ever had. Okay. Mr. Nisbet?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of council, members of the community, the next item is an item we just simply labeled as fire preparedness. But obviously, the fires down in Los Angeles have been on all of our minds for the last 10 days. Just horrific what we've seen down there. Very tragic and very scary. And we've all been watching, and a lot of emotions. And a lot of it has also been people wondering, you know, can that happen here again? And what would we do here? And so since that's happened, I know you have received feedback from constituents. Staff has received numerous emails asking questions about our evacuation procedures, about how we do preventative brush clearing. Is it possible that our water, you know, wouldn't work, you know, all kinds of questions. In fact, we had a community and coffee event. A couple of you were there. I think half the question, we were expecting lots of questions about Old Town, and about half the questions were about fire preparedness at that coffee and community. So we thought we would just make a short presentation and take your questions. If council wants to make a few comments, this would be the time to do that. We're going to have a couple staff come up and just make short presentations. We will certainly take questions. You can take comments from the community. Obviously, if some direction comes out of that, you know, we can certainly take that, but probably save that for another day if something comes out of that where you want us to come back at another day. But we're going to queue up first Joanne Plummer. Right now, she is our Department Head over Emergency Services. She's going to go first, make a few words. We also have our Deputy Director of Public Works, Autumn Glazer, who is going to make a few comments from Public Works's point of view. And then on the line, we also have Natalie Inez from Southern California Edison. She told me earlier, she's juggling a couple different meetings. She's been very busy the last couple weeks, but she did want to be here, and she will raise her hand, Blake, if you see Natalie on the line. And maybe she'll make a few comments at the end, or if you have the councils any questions for her, she's happy to take those questions. And we also have a short video that was prepared. That's our Chief Hartwig making some comments about emergency preparedness as well. So with that, I'll let Joanne start us off.
Thank you, Mr. Nisbet. Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to actually take this opportunity to share with you that we have hired our new Emergency Services Coordinator, Mr. Jason Levy is in the audience. Jason, would you wave your hand? Jason comes to us from the county, and he has hit the ground running. He started last Monday, and he hasn't come up for air. So I wanted to share that between Mr. Levy and myself, we're focusing on regular communications with our county's Office of Emergency Management regarding current weather status, risk status, PSPS notifications. If you've been following the weather forecast, you would know that right now, we have a 30% chance for a red flag warning. flag warning Wednesday night into, into Thursday of this week for our county, but that's only a 30% chance and we'll keep our eye on that. Between now and Friday, we do expect extreme dryness. So nothing new to us. We're kind of used to that, but just again, to proceed when you're outdoors with caution and be very careful. We are in that extreme dry situation right now. Our current efforts in emergency services right now, Mr. Levy is reviewing and updating all of our plans. He is working to revive our community-based training for preparedness. Later this spring, you'll see some dates for the revitalization of our CERT program here locally in Goleta. But we've already started booking our community disaster education classes. We have, our first booking went on the, on the calendar this week. So again, hitting the ground running and, and we're not stopping. We have continued efforts with our county office of emergency management on refining our emergency notification systems and when necessary evacuation protocols and coordination. I'd like to take this opportunity to remind the community to be prepared, diligent, responsive, and one of the best resources during an emergency is the county web, county's website, readySBC.org. It's full of great information in preparedness before disaster and during a disaster. It's a great resource for community members to go to. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Glazer and if there's any other questions, I'm happy to respond.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. In Public Works, we're definitely busy and hazardous fuel reduction is one of our main priorities. Annually, March through June, our parks and open space crews and contractors perform defensible space work. So it's mowing, removing brush, down trees. And specifically, I'd like to talk about Elwood and then Los Canaros, Lake Los Canaros. Elwood, we had a big win with the CDP application and permit and that allowed us to get in and start removing those dead trees. So there's, there's some significant work that has happened. And yes, it started with a lot of paperwork and now this past year, we actually were able to remove 15 acres of heavy fuels, primarily dead tree removal. That was a combination of state agency support, California Conservation Corps, four different private tree contractors, and then also through three FEMA disaster, declared disasters over the last three years. About $750,000 worth of dead tree removals were part of that FEMA disaster. Moving forward, the city is working on an agreement to, with Cal, the county fire, to implement the $1.7 million Cal Fire Grant the city received previously. And that will go directly to removing brush, defensible space maintenance and tree removal. As part of the coastal conservancy grant that we also have been implementing, we were able to install about 1.3 miles of a three-inch water main and that's mainly for irrigation, but is also accessible for fire protection as available. This Public Works was also able to repair the emergency access road last year, which is a critical access point into the Elwood Mesa for emergency vehicles. And so with that, at Lake Los Canaros, one of the main efforts, we do a 30-foot fire break around the perimeter, especially where there are structures and residents. And that happens annually between March and June. Our four full-time staff crew members are doing that full-time during March and June. We also hold firewise or participate in firewise meetings with the community where we can talk about defensible space and what we're doing, what residents can do. And one last item, the urban forest management, we received a $1 million grant administered by Green Latinos and that's really to focus on going into the future, man, going through and doing a risk management on all of our trees and prioritizing the ones that need to be focused on first. So if there's dead or removed or branches that need to be removed, especially in light of fire reduction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Autumn. I think at this point, maybe we queue up the video, if that can be queued up. It's a good video about preparedness around your home and other things.
Then we could do a question?
And then we can take, and then we'll look to see if there's any comments from Natalie from SCE and then we can take questions after that, if that's okay.
That sounds good.
Hello, my name's Mark Hartwig. I'm your fire chief here in the city of Goleta. I'm also the county fire chief. We strive to be your local small-town fire department and bring all the resources that the county has to bear on any emergency here in the city of Goleta. We serve you here in Goleta, within the city, at stations on Patterson, from Los Canaros, from Station 11. And we also serve you from Station 13 outside of the city on the east side. Fire season is becoming year-round and we're prepared. We are increasing our response. We're bringing crews on. We're trained and we're ready to go. We're ready to help you, but you need to be ready as well. We have an interface here that is filled with what we call chaparral, more in this community or as much in this community as anywhere that I've seen throughout the state. And that chaparral is alive, but it's very combustible. We call it a live fuel moisture. So what does that mean? It means that we'll continue to be prepared. We'll be out doing fuels reduction projects and, as you've seen, but we'll also ask you to be ready. We, we adopt here in the city the Ready, Set, Go policy. It's a statewide adopted plan for you to get ready ahead of time, then to be set, to keep a watchful eye out, and then to go when called. You can go to readySBC.org and you can find out more details on Ready, Set, Go. But generally it is prepare your home and your property. We have what we call now a zone zero and that is finding those areas right next to your home and clearing that completely away. What we know today is that your home is much more likely to burn, not from direct flame impingement, but from embers that come from fires that are nearby. And they find those places next to your home, in your eaves or on your home, that they then see and start. And then we, we have structure fires in wildland interfaces because of that. Here in Goleta, I wish I could tell you that part of the city was safe, but because of our sundowner winds, specifically in this area, we have embers that will carry for miles and could impact your home. And so because you're not right next to the chaparral, doesn't mean that you don't need to be ready. Go onto our website, find tips on ways to clear not just that zone zero, but then 30 feet clearance from your home, which is what we call a zone one, and then zone two, which is up to 150 feet around your homes. The other part is to be set. Some things like pets and ways to care for your pets, pet carriers, even medications. You can't leave some of those things behind. So have all of those things ready, have them in one place so that when you're given the order to go, an order that isn't taken lightly, but is made in cooperation between your local police department, the sheriff's department, the fire department, and any other local agency, when we tell you to go, we need you to go. So you can be safe, of course, but then we can get in and protect your home and put the fire out. We've adopted the see something, say something that the law enforcement has used now for years. When it is fire weather, have a watchful eye out, report anything that you see that could be a potential danger. Thank you for listening and thank you for the privilege to serve you as your fire department here in Goleta.
And then Natalie, if you're there and you're, and you want to make a few comments, this would be the time to do that. And I just wanted to acknowledge Natalie, like I said, I think she's been under, SCE's been under a lot of pressure. They've been doing their best, but I've certainly noticed in the two and a half years I've been here, Natalie has been just a great regional rep, very responsive, always there when we need something from her. And tonight, you know, I asked her to come to the meeting and it was no problem at all. So just appreciate her being here and Natalie, if you want to make, and some of the comments they've been getting besides just the fire are PSPS and so there might be some questions about that. So Natalie, if you want to make some comments or if you just want to be available for questions, that would be great.
Thank you, City Manager Nisbet and hello, good evening, Mayor Pro, I can't even speak tonight. Prodi and honorable council members, it's an honor to be with you all. I am virtual. I was managing multiple meetings tonight, but glad to be here and was able to watch the video and also the staff presentations earlier. And I just want to say I look forward to working with Jason Levy as your new emergency manager as well. But again, thank you for having me. Thank you for inviting me. And first and foremost, thank you for your partnership. You know, I, I have been serving the city of Goleta now for about two and a half years as well. And the partnership that we've developed over those two and a half years just keeps getting stronger and I appreciate both staff and council's dedication to that. This has been a significant public safety power shut-off season for us. And in fact, in Santa Barbara was impacted very early, earlier into the, I guess PSPS season than we normally see with drier vegetation, lower humidity and winds that are surpassing, you know, what we've historically seen. It has been a very active public safety power shut-off. I want to just say we have a lot of resources on our website and the simplest and easiest way to gain those resources is just to go to SCE.com/Outage. There you'll find information from our outage map, which is used during PSPS events and during all outages. So it's always a resource for you. We also have outage preparation tips on there. I know there was a reference made about being prepared. And so we do have outage tips online as well in addition to customer resource and support opportunities. And I'll also mention that we have information about our medical baseline program. So those are SCE customers who may be dependent on a medical device that needs electricity. We have our medical baseline program. This allows us, one, to know that we have a customer who's dependent on electricity for a medical need. And it does provide a little bit of a stipend for our, our customers as well. And for folks who do qualify for medical baseline program, they may also qualify for our critical care backup battery program, which provides those customers a portable backup battery in the times that we do have to de-energize customers. Again, this wouldn't happen without partnerships and I do want to think of a few other ones. Oftentimes when we have public safety power shut-off events in the county, we turn to our partner in Goleta, the residents and on Hollister Avenue to open up one of our CRCs, which is our community resource centers. So I do want to thank them. Our dedicated staff go out to that location and kind of set up an opportunity for customers to come in, whether or not their power has been de-energized, to answer or have, you know, have their questions answered, to pick up resiliency kits, to pick up light snacks and refreshments if they'd like. And so again, I just want to thank the residents and for that partnership because we call on them often. And then we had county fire do that video. We appreciate them. We appreciate the office of emergency management through the county. We work quite often with them. And other partners like the Santa Barbara County Fire Safe Council. There are so many partners in the county and within the city that we partner with and I just thank you all for that. I am available for questions if there are any, but again, I thank you for your time and for your partnership.
Thank you so much, Natalie. Okay, questions? Councilmember Smith?
Yes, one question that came up for me in reading some of the news out of the Eaton Fire in particular in the Altadena area was a report that there had been a disabled man and disabled son who were in the evacuation zone and they were apparently awaiting for an ambulance to come to evacuate them. They had family try to come and evacuate them, but they were turned away by law enforcement. The ambulance never came and the two died. And so I, I don't know if we have the answers today, but my question is if you don't have, if you either don't have the ability to drive a vehicle or you're too poor to afford one or, you know, maybe your vehicle happened to break down on the day of the fire, what's the procedure for evacuation? And does law enforcement, I don't know if there's any proactive reporting for any vulnerable individuals or if that's really, is it left to the individual to make, make arrangements? I don't know if there's anybody here this evening, but that's a question that's percolating for me.
Yeah, it's a great question. I'm, I'm looking out there to the staff to see if anyone wanted to jump up to the microphone, at least it looks like our assistant city manager, Mr. Valdez, does. But while he's getting up to provide some answer to that, I, I do believe it's probably one that we'll look into a little further. And when we have some debriefing meetings with the county, this is something we can certainly bring up and talk to the county staff at OEM as well as the sheriff's staff who's in charge of evacuations when they're needed and bring that up as an example to see what the processes would be here. But Mr. Valdez, if you have something additional on that?
Yeah, I was just going to echo those comments and then also to, that's a, that's a question we can follow up directly with the sheriff's office. I don't want to make any claims when I don't know the answer. All I do know is our sheriff's office during an evacuation orders are very thorough in terms of going up, knocking, trying multiple times, bullhorns, any number of different things. There's always the permutation that someone may be challenged with, when it comes to hearing or, or any number of things. So I can't say that it's foolproof. The other things that I know are tracked are sensitive areas or sensitive facilities, like your dialysis centers, things like that that are at risk. But I think we can follow up a little bit further on that because it's a really good question. I think, you know, obviously we're not the only jurisdictions that would ever have to deal with that question.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Thank you for this presentation. I had, I received a number of questions and just inquiries from residents related to this topic. So I'm really glad that we're having this presentation tonight. So I want to bring forward some of the things that I heard about defensible space. I'm so glad we have that video and I hope that we can share it widely. I think there continues to be an assumption when folks hear defensible space that it's not for them if they live in a more urban or even more suburban area. So the points that Chief Hartwig made are so spot-on. And when I was having these conversations, you know, I think residents would really appreciate more, more education or resources about what does that mean for me if I live, you know, in, in my neighborhood or in Old Town or in other parts of the city? What does it mean if you live in an apartment building or in a duplex? I think that kind of information, right now we have a very interested community and learning more about it. So it's a great opportunity to get more education out there. I also heard a number of questions and concerns from residents immediately around Lake Los Canaros related to how, how is the city, you know, mitigating any kind of wildfire risk there? You know, what kind of fuel reduction happens? What, you know, how, how should we find out more about that? So I share that and that there's, there's a lot of interest from, you know, those immediate neighborhoods to hear more about what that looks like there. It's a treasured community resource and they love it. They love the open space there and I hate to have any resident kind of now look at it as, is this something I should be afraid of or worried about? So learning more about that I think would be great. And I don't know how we would do that. I'm happy to kind of brainstorm what that might look like. Another series of questions I received was about trees and the public right-of-way that are touching utility lines. A lot of concern around that. Is that something I should be worried about? Who do I talk to about that? Is that my responsibility as a homeowner to trim trees? So I did receive a lot of questions about that and I think residents would want to hear more about, you know, what, what kind of risk is that? And I know a number of residents also mentioned trees in their backyards, which, you know, they do assume is their responsibility. They may be touching utility lines and want some more information about how, how they should think about that. And lastly, I'm, I'm really glad to hear, to have new staff on. I've heard over the last few months, a lot of interest in those community classes coming back, in particular CERT. And I think we have a great model with Goleta Lead to really think about some bilingual CERT classes or Spanish CERT classes as well as listos. So I'm really glad to, to meet you. Welcome. And I think you've got a lot of residents who will be very eager to sign up for those classes. I think that, that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Kasdan?
Thank you. So first, I don't know, well, the first thing is sort of a question observation and that's with respect to the firewise program that was described. with respect to the FireWise program that was described. I forgot who. Oh, there we go. Autumn. Well, no, no, no. I guess my question is, is really, it's bureaucratic. And it's really that on, that a lot of the FireWise program, as I understand, is really geared for homeowners and getting people, residential homeowners, to take action. And I guess I'm wondering how much that is something that is, you believe is in your purview and fits in the responsibilities you have, as opposed to the new, I forgot your name, new emergency services and neighborhood services to keep somebody doing outreach? And I guess, you know, it's really just an observation to think about where that kind of work goes best if, you know, in doing the outreach. And I guess it's a, it's a challenge. You have to, it's a sustained kind of thing to get people to organize in the Fire Watch program, to, you know, have regular meetings and so forth. It's a, it's something not trivial, I think, to really do. And so I guess I'm just, it's not as much a question as just toss it out for you guys to reflect on. The other question I had is, I understand that, and I don't know if, this might be really more of a planning question, but, well, there we go. But new, in certain areas, new housing has to reflect sort of fire-retardant principles, a fire mitigation, like no wood shingle roofs or wood siding. And, you know, there's a whole series of different things to keep the houses from being vulnerable. And you could clearly see in the fire, in the fires that happened, new houses or certain houses didn't burn, and often because they had some sort of roofing or something else that was less vulnerable. And so new housing, I believe, in certain fire-prone areas are required by state law. Is that, how does that affect us in Galita? Either in, well, any of the housing that's coming in or county housing, like Glen Annie? Do you know offhand? Or is that getting you on the spot? And good question.
Run away.
No? That, okay.
Well, I'll just, I'll just answer really generally, that, you know, we follow the state building and fire code, and, you know, it's been adapting over time based on experience. And your example of, you know, wood shingle roofs is just but one of many examples of how it's adapted over time and become stronger. It's probably one of the strongest codes in the nation with regard to that. And I bet we see probably 100 bills in the state this year having to do with this as well. So it's happening at a higher level, and then, I mean, the simple answer is, as projects come in, we follow the, you know, the building and fire code.
Well, I guess even if the, we're, I believe state law requires in certain zones that new housing has to adhere to these higher standards, just like in an earthquake zone, you have to, there's certain building standards. And, but number one, it's only relevant for new housing. We have a ton of housing, so, you know, it's, that's relevant then on any of the projects? That could be, maybe, maybe not relevant on new projects like, that's proposed, like Glen Annie, for instance. But, well, for housing that's already here, that may be very vulnerable. And I think that was one of the cases in Altadena, is that you have older houses that were built with more traditional things. And I guess this would be, goes to what I was saying earlier. If there's a way of us finding grants to help people to kind of reduce their fire risk, in addition to the defensible space, you know, and reducing vegetation near the house, it might also be if they have a wood roof, is there a way that we can help them cost share or find grants or something to replace that? Okay, wasn't so much a question, was it? Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Carrillo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to everyone who's asked questions so far. There's been some good, some good questions asked. So I represent a neighborhood that was largely built late 1800s to the 1960s with a few exceptions, in Old Town Galita. And so you have a very highly concentrated population, about 5,000 people that live within a half mile of like Hollister, like, let's just say the community center. And so a lot of those folks are under-resourced and probably underinsured. And so one thing I would really like to get more information on is, and these are kind of adjacent to some questions that came up at our Coffee and Community event recently, what are the available resources that might be out there for under-resourced homeowners, under-resourced apartment buildings, under-resourced condominium homeowner associations that don't have the latest and greatest roofing, don't have the latest and greatest materials and siding and everything? You know, what are the resources out there that can help, help those, those community members either directly through direct support, or are there best practices that can lead to better approaches to defensible space within a highly urbanized, very dense community that, depending upon where you are, north or south of Hollister, you may or may only have really one road in or out? So I'd really like to get more information about, you know, what are some of the options for those folks? Another question that came up a lot was kind of just the obvious question, water. You know, do we have it? Do we have enough of it? Do we have enough of it where we need it? You know, I don't really feel like I have a strong sense of the availability of hydrants in, in Old Town and in some of the other more newly developed areas of Galita. You know, is there anything that we need to take into account in terms of the availability of water for hydrants? If helicopters need to make water drops, would they be able to do that at Lake Los Carneros, or would they have to actually go out to the ocean? You know, if that's an extra minute each way, that could really matter. So those are just some of the things that are on my mind. But again, just thank you to my colleagues who've asked some excellent questions here and made some excellent comments about communications and the importance of making sure our community knows that we really do have a plan. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to go to, if we have any public speakers.
Madam Mayor, I don't have any speaker slips for this item, but if any members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. And I don't see any hands raised from members of the public.
Well, I want to thank you for this presentation. I know the one thing that I learned, I thought I had a to-go bag and I was really prepared. And, and what I learned was that I wasn't. I'm not. And if, and I think the key here is if you see flames, you smell smoke, you grab a bag, and it's ready to go. Don't wait to have them knock on your door because they don't have the manpower, the bandwidth to knock on everybody's door. And, and the other tip I got from a friend who's been through something similar said, make sure you have all your things either in a backpack or suitcase on wheels. And I'm thinking, why? Because you may have to run. So keep it on your back or keep it with, on wheels. So, yeah, it's something that I know I'm not prepared, and I'm getting prepared now. I'm starting to gather everything, and, and so just knowing where it all is is going to be helpful. But thank you for this presentation. Thank you. Okay, so I think we're moving on now to the consent calendar.
That is item A1, approval of the December 17, 2024 city council meeting minutes. Item A2, acceptance of the November 2024 check register. Item A3, authority to sign estate documents and approval of donation. Item A4, approval of the 2024 to 2025 agreement for operation of a free countywide library system. Item A5, update to the 2023 pre-authorized consultant list. Item A6, approval of Amendment Number One to Professionals Design Services Agreement with DKS Associates Incorporated for preparation of the 2024 Development Impact Fee Nexus Study Update. And item A7, Amendment Number One to Cooperative Agreement with the Santa Barbara County Flood Control and Water Conservation District for improvements to and maintenance of the San Jose Creek Channel and Fish Passage Modification Project.
Thank you. Council wish to pull any item from consent? Not seeing any. Do we have any speakers?
Madam Mayor, I do not have any speaker slips for any items on the consent calendar, but if any members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak, please raise your hand, and we'll call on you. And I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you.
I'm happy to move Consent Calendar A through, A1 through A7.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. If we can have a real call vote, please.
Councilmembers, please remember to lock in your votes. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Reyes-Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Porcasden?
Aye.
And Mayor Perotti.
Aye. Eyes have it. Okay. I like it. Thank you. Probably no one knows what we're really laughing at here. Okay, so eyes have it, and a yes. And we are moving on to presentation.
Our next item is item B1, a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Galita, California proclaiming January 2025 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month.
All right, do I have someone that would like to come up? I think Tiffany Carti? Well, I'd like to present on behalf of the City Council, a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Galita, California proclaiming January 2025 as Humus, Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Whereas, human trafficking is a form of modern slavery that occurs in every state, including, including California, where victims are forced to work in various forms of labor exploitation, including but not limited to commercial sex acts and other services that are induced through force, fraud, and coercion. Whereas, due to its isolated and discreet nature, many individuals across the globe are unaware that trafficking exists in their communities. And whereas, it is estimated that more than 28 million people around the world are victims of human trafficking. And whereas, human trafficking victims face a cruelty that has no place in a civilized world. It is a crime that can take many forms, and one that tears at our social fabric, debases our community humanity, and violates what we stand for as a country. And whereas, increased education about how to identify human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of in-state resources and services for those affected by criminal exploitation, can help decrease the number of future victims. And whereas, the Santa Barbara County Human Trafficking Task Force is committed to using all applicable laws and resources for investing, excuse me, for investigating human trafficking and prosecuting those engaged in it. And whereas, the Santa Barbara County Human Trafficking Task Force has worked diligently to bring awareness to the fact that human trafficking occurs closer to home than one might think, that California ranks number one in the country for reported, for reported human trafficking cases, and that Santa Barbara County is home to hundreds of survivors for trafficking and exploitation. And whereas, Human Trafficking Awareness Month is an opportunity to recognize and the critical role all Santa Barbara County residents play in preventing, reporting, and adjudicating those horrendous crimes. Now therefore be it resolved that on this 21st day of January 2025, the City Council of the City of Galita, California does hereby proclaim January 2025 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Approve this 21st day of January and sign by myself, Mayor Paula Perotti. I'd like to present this to you. And I know that we're going to take some pictures. Thank you for being here, and thank you for what you do. Do you want us to take all the picture? And then I'd love for you to say a few words. We're going to take a picture with everybody standing up and over here. Kelly will tell us where to go and what to do.
My name is Tiffany Carti, and I have the honor of serving as the Victim Witness Program Supervisor with the Santa Barbara County District Attorney's Office. Human Trafficking Awareness Month is a time when we have the ability to bring attention to the reality of human trafficking within our own community. People often think of human trafficking as something that happens out there in larger cities, without realizing that our neighbors, friends, students, and at-risk youth in our own backyards are frequently exposed to the pain of this trauma. In recent years, the risk factors for human trafficking have grown exponentially due to factors such as the loss of income during the height of the COVID pandemic, the ever-rising cost of living, and the increased online exposure of our youth to predatory behaviors. Between January 2017 and December 2023, 269 human trafficking investigations were conducted within our county. Out of these investigations, 235 survivors of trafficking were positively identified. Forty percent of these survivors, so almost half, were residents of Santa Barbara County. And one in four of these survivors were children. An additional 31% of these survivors were young adults between the ages of 18 and 24. These survivors often look just like you and I. It is the child who's regularly truant or falling asleep in class because they can't stay awake after a night spent working. It's the college student who believes that they met the love of their life when they were actually just a target. It is the person experiencing homelessness who desperately needs to survive and buy food from the local market. Over 90% of these cases involved sex trafficking, but our Human Trafficking Task Force is deeply committed to expanding our work to better identify survivors of labor trafficking as well. The Human Trafficking Task Force was established in 2013. We are a multidisciplinary coalition of law enforcement agencies, community service providers, community advocates, and our own DA Victim Witness Program. As a team, we provide training, public outreach, survivor-centered services, assist with investigations and prosecutions of offenders, and leadership based on local research and relevant data. Thank you for recognizing this critical issue within our own community. Please know that our task force is always at the ready to provide training in prevention and awareness at local sites. It's our hope that you will join us for an in-person vigil for freedom on Wednesday, January 29, at 5:30 PM in De La Guerra Plaza. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have another presentation. Oh, do we have any speakers?
I do not have any speaker slips, but if any members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak, please raise your hand, and we'll call on you. And there are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have, moving on to- Thank you. Okay, we have moving on to B2.
Our next item is Item B2, A Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Galita, California, Proclaiming January 21st through 25th, 2025 as E-Bike Safety Awareness Week.
Do we have someone that would like to come up and receive this? Okay. A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Galita, California, proclaiming January 21st through 25th, 2025 as E-Bike Safety Awareness Week. Whereas, riding an electric-assisted bicycle, e-bike, continues to increase in popularity for all ages. And whereas, there are many benefits of e-bikes, they can help to cover longer riding distances, climb steeper terrain, travel at higher speeds, enable users to travel by bike instead of a car, thereby helping to encourage physical activity and reduce traffic congestion and pollution. And whereas, e-bikes are heavier and faster than standard bikes, and without the proper safety education and training, e-bikes riders have a higher risk of becoming severely injured or killed in a crash. And whereas, e-bikes become more, as e-bikes become more commonplace, it is also important for drivers to familiarize themselves with sharing the road with e-bike riders. And whereas, in an effort to improve public safety, the State of California has passed e-bike safety laws that require who and where each type of e-bike can lawfully be ridden, and that riders 17 years of age and under must always wear a helmet. And whereas, the CHP launched an online e-bike safety and training program to help keep commuters and recreational cyclists safe. Whereas, e-bikes can bring joy and a sense of freedom, and some collisions can be avoided by practicing common sense safety, including checking your battery, brakes, chain, and tire pressure, watching your speed by riding slowly and respectfully on multi-use paths or where pedestrians are present, riding predictably, using hand signals, and keeping eye contact to communicate your movements with other vehicles. Avoid texting, talking on the phone, or listening to loud music while riding, and obeying traffic signs, signals, and roadway laws, just as cars are required to do. Whereas, E-Bike Safety Awareness Week can take place from January 21 to 25, 2025, and will include an e-bike presentation and helmet distribution at Galita Valley Junior High on Tuesday, January 21st. You did that today? Oh, okay. That's cool. I would have loved to come. I didn't know. And San Marcos High School on Wednesday, January 22nd, and e-bike skills class and group ride at Galita Valley Junior High on Thursday. Oh, you're having, okay, January 23rd. Now therefore be it resolved that on this 21st day of January 2025, the City Council of the City of Galita, California does hereby proclaim January 21st through 25th, 2025 as E-Bike Safety Awareness Week, and encourages residents to learn more about the emerging popular activity. Approve this 21st day of January 2025 and sign by myself, Mayor Paula Perotti.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hema Jimenez, and I'm the Education Encouragement Coordinator for Move Santa Barbara County. I mostly oversee all of our programs here in Galita, and so I'm super happy to be here and super happy to be involved in the E-Bike Safety Awareness Week creation and development. I wanted to thank you all for inviting us again to participate and create a program and events for students in particular at our junior highs and high schools in the area. This being the third year we are participating in this, we saw this year as an opportunity to create a program for students that could launch into hopefully an established program year-round. And so, we went to schools starting last year, the end of the year, asking students and teachers and staff about what are their experiences are with e-bikes. And we learned a lot, and we were able to create a presentation and program based on their feedback. And so, as mentioned, today was our first day. We went to Galita Valley Junior High, and we had a presentation and a helmet distribution. And we are super grateful for the response. Students were super engaged in our presentation. Students after the presentation mentioned how they didn't, you know, they were happy to learn the rules of the road. Our presentation was interactive too, so it was nice to get a back and forth of what knowledge they carry and what's new to them. And yeah, and it's great to see how e-bikes have transformed the city of Galita and Santa Barbara County. We heard many students who are interested in riding, getting their e-bike, you know, and some of their students love their e-bikes, right? It has been a great way for them to get to school, to get to after-school programs, and to go to the areas they need. And this has also changed, you know, the culture as well in the area, right? The city of Galita is a great area to bike, to walk, and, you know, we are here to support, to make sure that is a mode that people can choose, that is safe for everyone and accessible for everyone. And so, I also wanted to thank the city of Galita, the Galita Police Department, California Highway Patrol, and the Galita Valley Cottage Hospital, who have also been supporting this effort. Thank you all, and have a good evening.
Thank you so much for all you do. I think we may have a couple of questions.
I have just a quick comment before you leave. Thank you again. I'm glad I get to thank you in this setting also for being a recent guest speaker at our Kellogg PTA meeting. It was really appreciated, and it just goes to show the outreach that Move Santa Barbara County is doing, not just at the high school and middle school level, but to elementary schools as well. And I know you've participated in back-to-school events at various schools. It's just really great to get as much of that education out as possible in our community. So, thank you.
Counsel member Kazdin?
I guess, as you know too, I now see more people on e-bikes than I do on traditional bikes.
Yes.
And in many ways, they're really different. And so, I guess, you know, when we're thinking for the city on what to do about it, we're thinking, how do we design, what sort of roads, or what sort of lanes do we want, class-two bike lanes, class-four bike lanes, you know, what sort of things? And I guess I'm just not asking for your opinion right now, but to think about what designs really seem to make sense for e-bikes. What should we be thinking about to accommodate pedestrians, e-bike riders, bike riders, cars, and all the rest? So, just, you know, as we go forward, we'll look forward to your observations.
Yes, and just to share a little, happy to participate in those conversations. I am really grateful for my coworkers who have a great amount of knowledge and relationships with cities and county staff. And so, to be a part of those conversations is really important to us because we want to make sure that our county and city are safe and accessible for all users of the road. And so, we're happy to be a part of those conversations and as well be able to share education to the public.
I have a question for you. Are you seeing e-bike riders even at the elementary level, elementary school?
Oh, that's a great question. Not to my knowledge, but we do see them riding, and we do really hope all elementary students, even pre-K, are having access to a bicycle. You know, we also have a fleet program that we launched with the city, and so, being able to have that accessible to all students after school is going to be really impactful. Half of the students participate in after-school programs in Galita, so having that access will be really, really great stuff to have, to biking and learning how to bike. And I'm sure, you know, with seeing e-bikes everywhere, like I mentioned, they are, you know, really thinking about having e-bikes and, you know, looking at that in their future. And so, to be able to prepare ahead of time will be really impactful. And yeah, thank you.
Well, I have an idea for you. It wasn't my idea, but someone told me about a school district, and it was somewhere in California, that especially junior high. To be able to ride an e-bike to the junior high, you had to take a course at the school, and it was offered from a nonprofit similar to what you do. And then they got a little certificate, and that's how, then you can ride your bike to school and it'd be documented. So, I just thought that was kind of a creative idea because we have so many more kids, students, riding to school. In high school, when my girls went to school, we tried so hard, I worked as a volunteer, trying to get more people to bike to school or walk to school. And it wasn't cool. I mean, they just were like, no, you know, they didn't want to do that. As soon as they got a car, at 16, they drove. So, you know, now it's very cool because they're electric bikes. But I also think the safety component is so important for their safety. So, thank you, what you do. Counsel member Smith, you have a question.
Oh, quick question. Will you be at Dos Pueblos High School this week, or have you been another time recently?
Yes, we'll be at Dos Pueblos tomorrow. We will be there during lunch. We'll have a booth that we're giving free helmets, and we also have interactive activities with the students as well about what they know about e-bikes, but also like sustainability questions, and to also learn about what their experience on e-bikes has been like too. It's really important for us to know what students are thinking, and that's one thing we learned today, for example, is that they love that e-bikes lets them go fast and lets them to get to their places need to go easier. Along with those conversations, yeah, we love it too, but we want to make sure they're safe and they know the rules of the road.
Counsel member Kiriaco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A question and then a comment. So, my question is, once upon a time, the predecessor to Move Santa Barbara, the Bicycle Coalition, SB Bike, had done helmet giveaways and other, had taken other actions and done other education in Old Town, Galita. Are there any plans to do anything like that in the future that would be germane to the rapidly increasing usage of e-bikes in Old Town?
Yes, I would love to do more programming in Old Town, Galita. We're actually in conversations about planning for the next year, the next OTS grant. Not to get too much into the details, but we hope to have programming available for community members on safety events, on just walking in Old Town, or possibly riding our bikes in Old Town. So, we hope to engage more community members of all ages. I know our senior community is also a big riders on e-bikes, so we want to make sure we also have those conversations and information and resources for them.
And one more question. It's my understanding, I think this is particularly important for younger children who still have brain growth happening. The helmets that e-bike riders ideally would wear are different than regular traditional bike helmets. Isn't that correct?
That is a good question. There is a variety of helmets available. The ones we are giving right now are for the general, like, bike helmets. Yeah, so that's something to look into, actually. I know there's helmets that are full face for bicyclists too. That may be something to look into more. But yeah, as of now, we're only, our helmet distribution, we do helmet distribution sometimes that are free helmets that we're providing, but sometimes we'll also provide them for an affordable price. We sell them for $12, which is amazing. But other than that, yes, I'll learn more into that.
Thank you. So then the comment is just, thank you so much for all the work that you've done to educate the community, but also to educate us as policymakers, and not just this body, but in other cities and communities throughout the region. I had an e-bike that was just sitting on my patio with about 400 miles on it. And to the question or the comment about like, what are things that the city could be doing to encourage it? Infrastructure, separated paths. I now have 1,600 miles on that same bike that I had, that we had 400 a year ago. You know, having more options and better options for people to get around safely will lead to increased ridership and more connectivity. So, just keep on keeping on.
Yes. Do we have any speakers?
I do have two speaker slips for this item, and one hand raised on Zoom. If any additional members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak, please raise your hand and we'll call on you. Our first speaker in person is Rosie Monreal.
Good evening to everybody. My name is Rosie Monreal, and I'm the owner of the furniture store located at the corner of Holister and Fairview. The reason I'm talking right now is because with the new changes on the road on Holister, you guys created a bike path that ends like 40, I'll say 40 feet before the intersection with Fairview. And people riding the bicycles have to go through the sidewalk because the bike lane ends right there by the thrift store. So, they have to use the sidewalk in order to continue their underway. So, this has been created a problem because sometimes, you know, they run into pedestrians. Sometimes there are cars coming from the driveway, and people also are riding the bicycles against the traffic. I have seen the bicycles running through red lines, running through the stop signs. They don't respect people walking on the sidewalks either. So, we have to make them aware that the rules that we have for cars apply to the bicycles too. So, they have to make the stop, they have to allow pedestrians to go through the sidewalks, and then continue with whatever they're going. So, that's one of the things. And another thing that, there is a problem right where the driveway of the store is, you know, when they change from the bike lane, they use the entrance of the driveway, and there is probably like two-inch or three-inch lip right on the driveway. And so far, five people tripped the bicycle and got hurt. The last guy hurt the face, you know, the hip and everything. I have to help him and bring it inside the store to help him, you know, to see that he was fine. But this is a recurring problem. I put some sticks by the entrance of the driveway to make the transition easy for them, and I put some letters with caution. So, I don't know, sometimes they see it, sometimes they don't. But it's something that maybe you can work on and prevent that from happening again.
Well, thank you for your suggestions and your concerns. Thank you.
Yeah, so that's one of the things. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Our next public speaker is Aaron Bonfilio.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable members of the council. My name is Aaron Bonfilio. I'm the Director of Multimodal Programs at SB CAG. That's the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments. And I would like to commend the city. And I would like to commend the city, its staff and SB Move for their work and diligent participation to increase awareness regarding safety for e-bikes. In my role at SB CAG, I work on everything from trains and buses to active transportation projects, including those dealing with e-bikes. And in fact, this May coming up will be the National Bike Month across the, the country for cycle mania here in Santa Barbara, so please keep an eye out for that. But e-bikes have the potential to increase biking in the community, make it more accessible, but also to those who cannot drive and have limited mobility or limited income. As we often like to say, safety first, but in transportation, that's especially important. So I'd like to thank the city for its hard work to promote awareness around safety for e-bikes and cycling in general. And with that, thank you for the time.
Thank you. I think we're sponsoring the mayor's ride this, this, this May.
Yes.
Have to get everybody to come on out. Do we have any other speakers?
If there are any other members of the Zoom webinar who wish to speak, please raise your hand and we will call on you. I have one hand raised from Carol Gemberling Stewart.
Okay.
Can please accept the prompts that are going to be on your screen?
I just want to make a couple of comments. One, I'm a senior citizen. I did take the Move e-bike course and I highly recommend it. And I think it should be something that everyone uses to get educated in the rules of the road and to make it safe for themselves and others. I also volunteer at Cottage Hospital in the Fund of the Sun Program and recently asked the critical care nurses who run the program about brain injury, what type of a cycle helmet is most ideal since it seems as if they're treating them in the emergency room as if they are motorcycle accidents. It seems as if a bicycle helmet is not going to protect the brain of a young person or an older person, anybody. And then the third thing, which is kind of something I've taken on myself, but I know that Gersh Park is a place where I love to walk. I have had to talk many times to these young men who come on their e-bikes and like to do wheelies on the grass and tear, you know, tear up the environment, even though there are signs posted everywhere that they shouldn't be riding there. So I think that should be included in the educational programs of where it's okay and not okay for safety reasons. Because one of the last times I did it was a Sunday and it, park was loaded. There were children playing, there were dogs, there were people walking, some with walkers. And these young men decided that they were just going to ride wherever they wanted to ride. So if there could be that, if that could be included in the educational program, that safety goes beyond just their own safety, but the safety of those around them and that they should pay attention to the signs that are posted, that would be something I would highly recommend. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your call.
And there are no additional public speakers.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to make a comment on the first speaker's comments. So on the first part where she made a comment about the bike lane ending when you're heading westerly towards Fairview. So I just wanted to make the comment that when this restripping was being designed, we did look at that. And the challenge is that the road is as wide as it is, to accommodate the number of lanes at the intersection is, was too narrow to have the bike lane split the through lane and the right turn pocket. But I'm going to ask the, our engineer staff to take a new look at that. I ride, I ride that section myself when I commute on my bike to work and it is tight as you're approaching Fairview. So we'll take a look at that. I also see that our Assistant City Manager got the contact information, so we'll also take a look at that. The driveway thing kind of surprises me, so we'll certainly go out and, and see what's going on there.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Carrillo.
Just to your, to your points, since you're, you were speaking to it, you, you might consider taking a look at where Glen Annie and Cathedral Loaks meet. You have a maneuver there that utilizes green striping that creates, I can't remember if they're called a bike box or what exactly it's called, but there's sort of a leading people to how to get over to the sidewalk safely that are traveling towards the mountains that are going north by bike. So we might look at something like that. But, you know, I agree, that's a difficult intersection because if you stay in the bike lane, it naturally gives you the opportunity to turn right, which a lot of bike riders going through Old Town do to get across Fairview. Fairview is a whole other conversation that I've heard about from bike riders over the years. But then the other thing is that I think what's supposed to happen is the bike rider is supposed to migrate to the left, temporarily use the vehicle travel lane, and then when they pass through the Fairview intersection, then there's a bike lane waiting for them at the auto, the tire store right there. So they just have to be able to navigate that small part of space, which prior to the bike lane, they also had to do. And, you know, I would argue that sidewalk bicycling has been a challenge for quite some time, but with e-bikes, it's becoming exacerbated and, and more dangerous. So I really appreciate the commenter and, and the conversation.
Yeah, we'll reach out.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We're ready to move on?
Our next item is item C1, First Reading of Ordinance Amending Title 15, Chapter 15.12 of the Galita Municipal Code to Exempt Hospitals from the EV Reach Code. Recommendation, introduce and conduct the first reading by title only, waiving further reading of ordinance number 25 next in line, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Galita, California, Amending Title 15, Chapter 15.12, Green Building of the Galita Municipal Code, Exempting Hospitals from the Electric Vehicle Reach Code and Finding the Amendment to be Exempted from the California Environmental Quality Act."
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Prodi and honorable council members. We're here tonight to follow up on an item that you adopted in September, namely looking at amendment to the city's EV Reach Code to exempt hospitals. For a little background in history, we discussed the EV Reach Code at several Green Committee meetings, at a public webinar, at several city council meetings, and at the September 17th, 2024 City Council meeting, the council passed unanimously the EV Reach Code, but with a request to return with an amendment for a hospital exemption, which that's what we're bringing to you today. As a note, as of October 17th last year, the EV Reach Code went into effect. As a brief refresher, our EV, this is a chart of our EV Reach Code and basically what it requires. And what was notable in that meeting and what you likely remember was discussion around how this applied to major alterations and renovations. The alterations and additions are trick, that trigger, that could potentially trigger our EV Reach Code are built into the state code, so we can't change those triggers. However, we can amend what part of our city our EV Reach Code applies to. And so from talking with our planning and building staff and taking in your comments and the public's comments, we identified that the proposed amendment would be to exempt alteration projects in the hospital overlay district zone from the Reach Code. We wouldn't be able to exempt them from the state EV requirements, but just for our Reach Code. As you'll see in the packet, we have an ordinance of two sections that are underlined that are where that language would go to exempt these addition renovation projects in the hospital overlay district. And this is because this is the only area where we have a hospital in the city, and so this would cover that hospital. I'm not going to read this entire slide, but a recommendation is to pass first reading of this ordinance tonight. And should you pass it on first reading, we would then, because it alters the building code, need to have a public hearing and second reading, which we would schedule in two weeks. We also have, are required to put out public noticing before the public hearing, which we would do. And staff, we're here for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Not seeing any. Oh, Councilmember Carrillo?
I'm trying to think about the, the right way to ask this. Do we have any sense of what, you know, the difference, the difference would be with or without including hospitals in, in the Reach Code in terms of where would we be in terms of the environmental impact at the end of the day? Is it, you know, do we think it's de minimis? Do we think it's, you know, not significant but not completely insignificant? I, you know, when I was looking through the port, I just, I didn't see a lot of data driving the decision to exempt. And I don't necessarily see that as a reason to not go forward with this, but I just, I'm, I'm thinking as much about the future when we're making other decisions, just, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to make this decision based on, just on how does it feel or what does it say to the community? Like, you know, I'd like to, I guess I'd like to know a little bit more about what we're doing here. Forgive me.
No, thank you for the question. So in doing this research, we consulted with several other cities that have EV Reach Codes. I think there's over 40 in the state that have these. We also consulted with the utilities and the technical consultants that can help cities. And there aren't any other cities that we found that have exemptions like this, so there wasn't any data we could really pull from. The reason we're bringing it back is because there was, we were directed to go do outreach to Cottage Hospital, which we did between the first and second reading. And they provided public comment, which we characterized in the staff report. And then based on that public comment and council discussion, we were directed to come back excluding the hospital from the EV Reach Code. As to like, what the far-reaching effects would be, be purely speculative. What I will note is that this time next year, our EV Reach Code would either be re-upped and adopted, or we just are into the state building code. So it's only this calendar year. This would apply anyway.
Okay, so it's arguably de minimis because it's going to be incredibly time limited. You don't want to say it. I get it. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hasden?
Yeah, I guess this is in response to your question. And, I mean, realistically, where the city of Galita are, the changes we make in our Reach Code are not going to really affect climate change. Everything we do is de minimis. But having said that, when we talk about the, the impacts on hospital, there, and we carved out a particular area, there the impacts of prohibiting or, or not prohibiting, but limiting or inhibiting new development that they would do because we've added costs actually can have life-threatening impacts. So in other words, if we're looking at a benefit cost kind of scenario and we're looking at only the impacts on, in, of this in terms of the hospital sector, there's more costs when you focus exclusively on the hospital sector and the benefits are always going to be relatively small because we're not a large contributor of greenhouse gases at, at that location. So I would think that if there's any area, any sort of location where it makes sense to carve out a exemption, it would be hospitals. So that would be my, my take on it.
Any, and any, do we have any speakers?
Mayor Prodi, I don't have any speaker slips, but if any members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak, please raise your hand and we'll call on you. And there are no hands raised.
Okay. So the next, so we, we will make a motion this evening and then it will come back as a public hearing? Okay? Okay, and then there'll be another hearing after that? Be two or one?
So tonight would be the first reading and then at the next council member, we would have a second reading, which is the public hearing according to the, how we adopt building codes and amend them.
Great. Hey, someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Please do.
Do I need to read the full thing? I'm guessing, yes, it's an ordinance.
I would think so.
Councilmember, I'm comfortable without reading it if you want to just.
I'll just, okay, then I'll just say.
Hit the highlights.
Move staff recommendations.
Sure.
I'll second.
Good, yeah, okay, all right. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers, please remember to lock in your votes. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Protemporak Hasden?
Aye.
And Mayor Prodi?
Aye, ayes have it. Thank you so much for doing the work and coming back to us on that. Thank you.
Our next item is item C2, Economic Development Strategic Plan, Old Town Initiatives.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Shannon Kern, Assistant to the City Manager, and I will be giving today's presentation on our economic development item. One moment while I start this presentation. And share my screen. So the purpose of today's item is to, to present the Pride of Place Grant Program for, for Old Town. So I, I wanted to start off with a little bit of background. I won't be going through the whole timeline. This should look a little bit familiar from last time. So last time we met on October 1st for, for this item, you know, it's a little bit broader of a topic. And we, I, we presented an update on the Economic Development Strategic Plan. And then also some potential ideas specific to Old Town strategies that could be implemented and rolled out relatively quickly. So at that meeting on October 1st, we council discussed and approved the Old Town Business License Fee Waiver Program and then also directed staff to bring this, this, this item to the Economic Development Revitalization Committee to work with community stakeholders and Women Economic Ventures to develop, to develop the initiative and potentially a grant program. So that is what we did. We, on December 11th, the Economic Development Revitalization Committee met and they ultimately recommended to move forward with the, with the grant program. They, and at that meeting, we also discussed and recapped the community outreach that was conducted, which you do have a summary in your packet. And they also requested and kind of an update on the business license fee waiver program as well as, you know, some finalized documents for this grant program. In addition, some potential other initiatives, which we'll get to later in the, in the presentation. But I did briefly want to touch on the business license waiver program. And so that is in the works. We are working on developing, on our, on the backend of our system when people apply for a business license within the Old Town neighborhood. We had to kind of create a map. So we're working on, on doing a beta testing later in February and then hopefully rolling that out in March to then run for a full year. And so you do have a draft letter in your packet as well that just, that will be going out with the, with the business license when, when folks apply and receive that waiver, just to kind of help explain what it is and, and give some background as to why they're not paying the, the fee and it's because of, you know, where their business is located. So that concludes my, my background. I wanted to, I also have a slide here on just the spreadsheet of our economic development plan and this specific initiative for Old Town. This should also look familiar, but this kind of gives you, you know, this is one of six imperatives. And so we're focusing on Old Town as we have been for the last couple of meetings. So now I'll move into the, the, the main purpose of today, of tonight, the proposed Pride of Place Grant Program. So as I mentioned, based on the discussions from last time in October, as well as the business community outreach that we conducted in the survey and then also the, the committee meeting in December, staff researched this grant program to provide the opportunity to businesses so that they could collaborate and kind of take pride in their ownership and investment. and investments in Old Town. So kind of give businesses, you know, the, the opportunity to apply for funding and to implement some creative and innovative ideas that they would like to see in Old Town. So that's kind of the, the, the purpose of this grant program. So this slide shows a summary of the grant program. You'll find a guideline document in, I believe in Attachment 3 of your packet, but this kind of gives the high-level overview. And so, staff is recommending to allocate $120,000 for this grant program, and as a reminder, this, this funding would be, is, is, this funding comes from the Streamlined Loan Program with WEAVE. So it's, it's funding that's already been set aside, and we would re, we would call it back, just how we did with the Business License Waiver Program. So, so allocating the funding that was for the loan program for this grant program. And, and while there is no limit to the funding, or no limit proposed to the, the funding that can be requested and applied for, applications would be evaluated based on the criterias that are briefly listed here, but go into more detail in the, in the guideline document. And so they would be evaluated by the Economic Development Committee, and it, how, you know, seeing how they align with, with the criteria that's listed. That is something that the committee had recommended, to not have a limit on the, what could be applied for, and the, kind of the, the thinking on that was, you know, multiple businesses could come together and, you know, want to submit a, a joint application, and maybe, you know, something for a little bit larger. And so the idea was, you know, we wouldn't necessarily want to restrict that idea, especially if there are multiple businesses. And you will see, you know, collaboration between businesses is part of the criteria, and so how, how it will be evaluated. And so along, and to go into the criteria, you know, you'll see the alignment with program goals, so, you know, with the goal being to promote businesses in Old Town, enhancing the sense of place and attracting more customers to Old Town is, is the main goal of this program. And then other criteria include community impact, innovation, budget, financial feasibility, you know, if it, if it, the, the funding request makes sense, and then engagement with the community and our customers. And so, I, I also wanted to mention that the, from the business outreach, the, one of the, the main, the highest chosen option for type of grant program was to attract customers to Old Town. That was what, what they, what they wanted to see, what we gathered through, through that, through that outreach. So this grant program, you know, with the goal of attracting more customers to Old Town, could be a lot of different things. So you will see that the guidelines don't restrict or don't require certain ideas to be proposed. It's, it's pretty open, I would say. And it kind of puts the, and allows business owners to, you know, to, to propose what they think, what they would, what they would like to see. But I do have some examples. So, you know, this could be advertising and a marketing, which was also highly rated on the survey, as well as beautification. So, you know, that could be plants, it could be signage, it could be lights, you know, seating. Parking was also mentioned a lot, and, and verbally and in the, in the surveys, you know, parking was talked about a lot. So this grant program could also potentially be, you know, if businesses can come together, you know, private parking, you know, reserved parking for their customers on a private lot, you know, it could be something like that. Could also, you know, potentially go towards permits or insurance. And I, I think it's pretty open, and, but the criteria that's listed in the guidelines, I think can help, you know, guide how they propose and what, what the committee would be looking for, what the city would be looking for when, when deciding if it's funded. So that kind of gives a brief overview of the guidelines, and then for timeline as well, is kind of a proposed timeline of if the grant program was initiated tonight, and kind of what, what it might, how long things might take, and, you know, the, so if it was approved tonight, then we would release a notice of funding availability by next week. And then, you know, the period would be open for about four weeks, with the applications due the end of February. And then March would be when the committee met, and depending on how many applications there are, there could be, there could be a need for multiple meetings. So that's why there's about a month there. And then those recommendations would go back to council in April, and then after April, once council approves the, the, the grant recommendations, then the grant agreements would need to be signed and finalized, and then funding be dispersed in about April or May, later this year. So that kind of concludes the, the proposed Pride of Place Grant Program. I did want to go into briefly other project suggestions, but I, these were, at the committee meeting in December, it was requested to look into just other, other potentials for, for other projects. If you, for the, for the funding, for the pot of funding that kind of was available that we're working within for this grant program, it was, as I said, it was from the Streamlined Loan Program, which has about $145,000 in the whole loan program. And if 120 is used for this grant program, that leaves about $25,000 or so still left in that loan program. And so it was requested to look into some, maybe some potentials of what, what else could be done, you know, other, other initiatives for Old Town. So I described three in the staff report, just ideas, and, and so if there was a desire, council could request us to, you know, give some direction on any of these or any other ideas to look further into, or not. So that's, that's up to, up to council. Happy to talk more about that, but if there are any questions. So, but briefly, it's a public gathering plaza. The idea with that is, you know, something where public could gather in a, in a, in a setting that is not, where there's no financial transaction, you know, you think of like, just a, a plaza in, in any other city, really, you know, where people can come and just hang out and just be, and, you know, where they can stroll and stay, and, and it's not tied to necessarily any, any financial cost, you know, it's public, it's, it's, and it's where you can see people and, and, you know, just be in the community. So that's, that's one suggestion. There's other things, you know, streetscape, infrastructure. So this is kind of similar to potential grant proposals as well, you know, this is plants, lighting, bike racks, signage, wayfinding, other improvements along the street. And then another idea is a buy-local incentive program. So this would be encouraging the community to, when they spend money locally, that there is a, then an incentive that they would be eligible to receive a prize. So other cities and other communities have done this. So it's not, it's not, it's not new, but it's not something that Galita has implemented before. So just an idea. And then, lastly, I just wanted to briefly talk about the current economic development expenditures that, that were approved and that we talked about before as well. And you'll see in your staff report, you know, some of them have been completed, some are still in progress, some haven't started yet. So this just kind of gives the breakdown, the visual of the, the funding that was, that's already approved and that we plan to continue on. And one I wanted to highlight was the Old Town Open for Business Campaign. And one thing that we gathered from the business outreach was the need for marketing and advertising. So talking with our community relations staff and this Old Town Open for Business Campaign and our, the great videos and, you know, our Instagram posts, those have gotten great, great feedback and great viewership, I guess, you know, we can track how many people view all of those. But we, that's just what, what we can do, right? But if there was paid advertising and where it's more out in the community to even let more of the community and our broader region know about Old Town, that's something that's very easy, relatively easy to do with, with paid advertising for Old Town Open for Business Campaign, and highlighting the businesses and the gens, you know, the gens in Old Town. So that's something that, that we, that we plan to do that is already within, you know, our current fiscal year's budget and, and ongoing projects. So that concludes my presentation. You know, I'm, I'm, I'll turn it over to council for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kern. Councilmember Kiriakko?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Shannon, great presentation. Can you go back a couple of slides?
Yes.
So-
This one?
Yeah, that works.
Okay.
So, you know, to begin with, I just really want to thank Shannon and our staff. Local government is sometimes criticized for not moving very fast. And, you know, I believe it was October when Councilmember Reyes Martin and I asked that this be brought to council for some guidance and direction, how could we, you know, best accomplish the goal of looking at our Economic Development Strategic Plan and seeing how we could kind of hone it and expedite parts of it so that we could make more of a difference for businesses that are dealing with some construction fatigue and dealing with some, dealing with the impacts of Old Town having the challenges it's always had. I mean, there's a reason why there's been a general plan goal since the mid-2000s of revitalizing and doing more for Old Town. And so with that in mind, I look at this grant timeline, and to think that we kind of kicked this back to the committee, took it to council and kicked it back to the Economic Development Committee in October, and we could be dispersing money in April or May, I, I think is a real testament to the hard work of, of yourself and the rest of our staff and our city manager. So I just really want to say thank you to everyone. You know, the second thing I'll say, can we go to the slide that has the, kind of the pie chart?
Yes.
You know, I just want to say that when you think about the, you know, the grants that would support businesses, when you think about the plan to waive license fees, when you look at the Old Town Open for Business Campaign, you know, I, I really think there are pieces and strong foundations of what we're, we're looking at that are responsive to the community and, and the voices that we've, that we've heard inside of Old Town and outside of Old Town. And so I'm really thankful to this council. Councilmember Keston, I know you had some really good suggestions at that October meeting, and I think they're reflected in what we're, we're looking at today with the grant program. So, so thank you, and, you know, everyone on council, Councilmember Richards, who's no longer here. I think, I think our, our fingerprints are on this expenditure plan, and the only, only real criticism I would have of it right now is I wish it was a bigger pie. But we can't do that today, we're not agendaized for that today, but I do think going forward, you know, when we get into our work plan and our budget for next year, we, we need to look at, are there other things that we can be doing for economic development, not just in Old Town, but citywide? But we're not agendaized to talk about that today. But I'm, I'm really pleased with what we see here. I don't really have a lot of questions, I just want to say a great big honking thank you, because my community needs it.
Councilmember Keston?
Yeah, so first, so some of, when we first were talking about lane restriping, one of the motivations for it was a reflection of the fact that small businesses in Old Town and other locations are finding it increasingly more challenging to compete in this age where Amazon and other remote sellers are there. Old Town especially is characterized by lots of small vendors who are, you know, really impacted. There's got to be, you know, what is it that's going to make your business stand out, assuming it's not a restaurant, for instance, where you can't go to Amazon or Walmart or whoever to get it? And so much of the motivation with the lane restriping was actually as a way in part to build that sense of place, to, to build on the walkability of Old Town, to encourage people to take advantage of Old Town and to leverage that, you do have lots of small shops, and it can be something that people, you know, go from one to another. You go to the flower shop, you pick up some cards across the street, you go to a bookstore, all those sort of things you, you do. And this proposal here is, is terrific because in part it builds on that same sort of idea. It encourages people, leverages some of the good qualities of Old Town, leverages some of the attractive aspects, and helps build on that. So I think that's terrific. I, I had a couple of questions, or observations as much as anything. One was the, was the timeline. I guess, I don't know how, this is, I don't mean to have the opposite argument that you just did, but I wanted to be sure there's enough time for both outreach to get the word out to people, and then time for them, especially if they're coordinating or doing something like that, or they have to get additional information about, you know, what a promotion would cost, or what, you know, all those things. So I guess, I guess what I'd say is to be flexible in some ways, as far as the timing, you know, you can see how, are there people who contact you? When, when you do outreach, see if people need more time. But, you know, let's, let's be sure that we're not being, you know, child, we're not too hard so people don't have time to do a good job or have time to do what they need to do, they think they need to do to do a good application. And I don't know what the magic number is. I don't know if four weeks is plenty, and, and so I'm not arguing that it isn't the right amount. I just want to make sure we can do the outreach and we can give them time to do what they need to do.
I can, I can respond to that briefly, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Keston, absolutely. So we will get the word out and do all that. I'll just go to the extreme. So in the extreme, let's say 30 days has gone by, we haven't received any applications. We're, we'll extend, we'll extend the time period and then say, get the word out better and find out why people aren't applying. So we, we hope that we're flooded with applications in those 30 days, but, yeah, to your point, if we're not getting the word out, if there's too many questions about what's the right fit, then we, we have the ability to extend the time that we're allowing for applications.
Okay. That's, yeah, I mean, you might be getting questions, as you were just saying, you're working with people after doing outreach, and they have questions, and you know an application or several applications are likely to come in. So that would be one suggestion I have. Another suggestion is, are we able to provide, is there some means to provide technical assistance to some of the businesses that, whether it is the, you know, through WEAVE they have financial, but also I don't know if there's some, if the Chamber of Commerce, for instance, would have ability, or if there would be others who would provide, let's say, on doing promotions, or doing some of the ideas, I don't see it on this screen, but on some of those ideas, there might be questions on what's the best way to do an event or to do a promotion? Are there, you know, can we provide some sort of either contacts or through staff or some way to give them some business support? And the, the last idea is, and this is probably something to think about with that $25,000, is that especially if people are thinking of, some of these things might go on beyond one year, that they might develop some sort of ideas or some sort of promotions or something, and it might be helpful if there's grant writing assistance available to, you know, whether we hire someone or whether we do something so that people can, can, so we can get grants to help people do these promotions year after year, if that's what they want, or events or something. But to build something to go forward. Anyway, that's, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I will add my appreciation for Ms. Kern. It really is tremendous work to, to get us here, not just what the full council is seeing with this item, but all of the economic development subcommittee meetings where we've hashed out a lot of this. Um, so thank you so much for, for your work. My questions are a little bit about, uh, how we roll out the application. And I think we learned a lot from the survey, um, from both the city's efforts and then the, the efforts of the Hispanic Business Chamber. So some of my questions were about the application itself. Is that intended to be, and maybe this was in the report, I missed it, um, submitted online? Will there be paper applications? Will it be available in English and Spanish? Similar to, uh, Mayor Protem Kasdan on technical support, if there's a business that needs, has questions about the application or how to fill it out, you know, I assume they can contact staff for that. So those are some of my questions around the application.
Yeah, thank, thank you, um, Councilmember Reyes Martine. And I guess I do want to say that, uh, this grant program, I modeled, I modeled it off of our city grant program a lot. So the, the four-week timeline for the application period, that's in our city grant guidelines, a minimum, I'll say a minimum of four-week, um, application period. And it, it's all online. So our city grant process is all through Zoom Grants. And so that, that is what I would, what we would use for this as well. It is not in Spanish, it's only in English. Uh, City Grants did have a mandatory, um, pre-workshop, uh, and I, I've never attended that, so, but that is something new, I believe, that started last year and it was this, they did it this year as well. I do think the notice of, of funding availability they released back in like December, I believe that even came to council, um, and that application period, I think, opened, you know, on the, I won't say it's a week or so ago and, you know, and is open, I think, through, um, I think it closes at the end of January, you know, so it, or in February. So I was kind of modeling this grant program to be very similar to the city grant program. As far as technical assistance, uh, I would, I, I, I think that's a, a interesting concept and could be, could be, I mean, you know, we've never done something like, so it could be requested from, from applicants. I'm not sure if it's requested from the nonprofits that apply for, um, the city grant program and maybe, right, you know, nonprofits kind of have that grant writing experience, so this might be a little bit different. Um, I, I'd have to look into it. I, as far as, you know, city staff, of course, is always available to, to help with, but as far as formulating a grant application, uh, and, and, you know, providing, maybe it is technical assistance of like access, um, you know, I mean, we have our computers here, uh, available to the public in City Hall, but, you know, that may not be conducive. So, uh, I would say if it's a desire of the council, um, we could, we could, you know, procure a third party to assist with some type of that technical assistance. It's the only thing, I guess, you know, I'm kind of thinking, brainstorming here. But it, I don't know if there are existing free sources for businesses for grant applications. The, uh, Small Business Association through, um, the, the National Small Business Association does have free resources for businesses, um, and that is through the Economic Development Collaborative. So they are always available to help businesses for technical assistance, one-on-one coaching, but I don't believe there's specific grant writing, uh, technical assistance, but there's, you know, financial, there's legal, uh, there's, you know, permitting, you know, they, there are a lot, there are resources geared towards, you know, small businesses. But specific technical assistance for Pride of Place Grant Program, I think that would have to be a little bit more specific and, and something that, um, you know, we may have to tailor a little bit and may require, you know, ti- timing for that as well.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I guess my concern is I recall from being a community member on that City Grants Committee, you know, even at the time, we heard from nonprofits who struggled with the platform. And I know that we've since maybe at some point changed to the, the one that we're currently using, but I do think that the, the nonprofits that come through the City Grants process are, are typically those that are a lot more experienced with applying for grants. And in this case, we may have folks who are doing this for the very first time. So I would encourage us, especially of looking at, you know, the proposed, the program guidelines, they seem pretty straightforward. I just wonder if there's a way that we could simplify, um, how a business would apply and, and make it, you know, just very accessible. I mean, even if it's like an old-school Word document, um, that they could, that could be printed out and, um, I just, I'm thinking outside the box, but I just, I really worry that having to utilize that online platform will be a really big barrier. And since this is a pilot, we want it to be successful. So I'm, I'm kind of thinking out loud now, but thank you. I, I appreciate all the points you made though.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I had a question in terms of, um, the overall funding going into, um, the various economic development, um, uh, efforts for Old Town. And particularly as it relates to advertising and marketing, I didn't know if it's known, if, if, if there's any percentage that's gone, um, to mailers, which I know is expensive. But, um, just, just putting it out there.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Smith. So as far as advertising for our Old Town, for open, Old Town Open for Business campaign, no, we haven't done any paid advertising, uh, because that is something that wasn't initially part of the Old Town Open for Business campaign. You know, we're using our own, uh, press, uh, mechanisms, I will say, you know, our own social, you know, city's social media channels. But with the, uh, with the outreach that was conducted and the feedback that we received, that was something that the businesses did, you know, show a, a, um, a need for and a want for. So kind of utilizing, that was just one, one way to utilizing what we, what is kind of already in place, uh, to, and to kind of just amplify that a little bit without, um, it being too much of a financial, you know, investment. That was just, you know, one, and that we could do this fiscal year. But I, I could see maybe in the future, mailers could be used for, um, maybe events. I, I'm trying, you know, maybe more specific things. But it's something that I'd also have to talk with our community relations team about. I don't know if that's ever been used for, um, for advertising like that. You know, aside from like our public notices, right? We do, we do mailers for, for those, but, um, yeah.
Yeah, I'm thinking back, um, I think it was actually the Community Development Department that had done a presentation about the ways our community are receiving information and how complicated it's become, um, uh, because, um, you know, different people are getting their information in different ways. And, you know, I'll just say in my experience, you know, there is a chunk of population who, you know, are not on social media, they're not, you know, getting the city emailed newsletter. And, um, so it's, it's more just an observation of, of, you know, and there might be creative ways even to partner, um, right? Like I know the Water District, right, sends information out with their billing, I don't know. But I, I do see that as a, as a maybe of a gap of a, there or, or the potential even for, um, um, either, but, uh, I don't know if the city might be eligible for certain PSAs or, um, that might be more from a city perspective, but just, um, trying to think about, you know, I know we're trying to utilize what we already have in a cost-effective way, but, um, I, I just know in terms of, um, information that for some folks, the good old snail mail is still, uh, the, one of the primary ways they're getting information. So I just put that out there as food for thought. The other, um, I, I guess this is more of a comment, but to the extent that there may be other, um, a balance of funds available, um, I would certainly be interested in, um, you know, to this day, people still aren't aware of, of the public lots that exist in Old Town, I'm finding in my conversations with people. So, uh, you know, despite all of the efforts to get the word out and where people could go, so in terms of either, you know, continued, um, education about that or maybe some improved signage, um, I would maybe defer more to the experts on that and, and some staff feedback, but I, I think that that, um, is a potential opportunity, um, you know, or maybe, uh, either for the city or, or, or for applicants. Could have some creative things. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to jump in here real quick. First of all, I want to thank you and the Economic Development Committee for all the work you put into this. I'm pleased with everything I'm seeing here. I, I do have a couple of questions on, I guess I'll start with the survey. The survey, if I'm reading this correctly, 88 responses, 25 Spanish, 63 English, online two Spanish. That's screams out to me that we definitely what we're talking about. Paper, 23. You, I think to make this, I like the idea, it seems like the paper works better. I don't know how you were accessing, um, do we have people that were helping get that, with those papers out to the public? Because I think that, that's a way to, to work it, you know? And I think that same goes for the application. The application has to be, um, not focused on always online. I think if we could figure out a way to do hard copies, um, you know, I, I haven't talked to a lot of businesses about, um, their bookkeeping or anything like that, but I know some definitely are, you know, doing it old-school with, you know, a ledger and, um, so that's where they're at and we have to come to that, um, to the idea that we need to appeal and help those folks that, um, to have access to this, um, funding as well. So I would like to see the, um, application, I agree, should be made a little bit easier. I'm not, I don't know how to do that, but, um, and then the other thing that, um, you know, and I was looking at the survey and then some of the, um, recommended concerns that came from folks, and I actually have received a few calls about parking, um, for employee parking. So is this a program that, um, you know, they're like, this is great that you've provided all these extra spots so people can, you know, have 90 minutes and, and be at a store and then, but where are we supposed to park now? You know, that work in, so is this something that, um, I know I talked to the city manager about the ideas, there's some way that there could be, uh, uh, some kind of a, a program where it's permits or, um, some, I, I've just, I'm also just kind of thinking, talking out loud, but you know, that's, I would like to see that looked into because, um, I think that's a, a problem that we need to look at. And, and I know that the time parking isn't working for them and they, they, you know, having had a job in Santa Barbara once that I had to move my car every 90 minutes, after a while you get, start getting a lot of tickets because you can't always move your car. If you're in the middle of a meeting like, oh, I gotta go, I gotta move my car, you know? So, um, uh, anyway, um, I, I'd like to look at that. And then also there was some conversation, um, about large trucks, um, having issues with delivery. Have we actually reached out to any of those? What is the problem? And might we, you know, I know it's kind of going off a little bit off track, but is there a problem? And it seemed to come up in, in one of the surveys.
Madam Mayor, I do remember, uh, one specific example where something came to our attention. It was isolated in one particular area and my recollection is, um, for that example, some Public Works did something to either make a modification or work with how that one can be done. I haven't heard of other ones. It's not to say that they're not true and maybe the survey, um, even though the survey was, was fo- was intended to be focused on business and what, what could, what, what does your business need? That's possible that it came up there. And then just as a reminder that these kind of broader but related topics, we're going to be coming back in March with a full check-in on Project Connect and the restriping, and that will include, um, comments and a dialogue about parking and things like that as well. But, um, Shannon, were, did the survey pick up, uh, delivery trucks? Was that, did that come up? Because I, I just remember one isolated incident.
Yes, yes, the survey, uh, there were several comments on larger, I don't know if it was delivery trucks or tow trucks, being able to unload, I don't know if it, and, uh, from, from my understanding, I believe it was to unload other cars. Uh, I could be mistaken on that, it could be a delivery truck, um, but that the, and they didn't say specifically what street was, was difficult to unload. I don't recall that, but that just in general, I think with, uh, the traffic impacts and, and that, that also made it difficult in addition to the restriping, uh, and just, you know, cars, other, other cars there. But I don't have any specifics or wasn't, I, I don't recall in a, you know, a specific instance, um, but I think it was the unloading of tow trucks.
And then the, um, question on the business license, do they all, I'm, I, I, do they all expire or need to be renewed around the same time? How does that work?
Uh, the, um,
How do, how are you gonna?
So every, yeah, every business in the city of Goleta or anyone who does business in the city of Goleta, regardless if they have a, a brick and mortar, um, in the city, has to get a business license and it has to be renewed every year.
At the same time?
Every, it, for that particular business, yes. They, everyone has their own expiration date, I, I, to, uh, so they're not all on the same schedule.
Okay, that's what I,
They, it's, it's when you, you know, you apply and you can apply any day of the week, any time of year, and then the follow, whenever, when that gets approved and you get your license, it's good for one year from that date.
Okay.
So the, yeah.
I think that's all I have right now. Okay, uh, Councilmember Karyaco?
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for letting me have a second bite at the apple here. So a, a couple of things, and there were some people that weren't here in the audience for this and, and since we're talking about the Old Town infrastructure. It was talked about earlier that with the new daylighting law and the, the requirements for improving visibility at intersections, if we had just, I mean, use air quotes here, left Old Town alone, we would have lost six parking spaces in the, in that corridor, which is equivalent of about 10% of the parking. So we went from losing 10% of parking to increasing parking by 40%. So I just, since we're talking about some of the changes and the impact, I just wanted to revisit that because there were some people that weren't here for that conversation. Uh, the second thing I'll say is I, I appreciate the interest in having, uh, technical assistance, both for, uh, the grant, uh, application, but just as importantly for the grant writing, the report, the, the end-of-year report and how did you do and, you know, how do you, did you measure success? But I also want to point out, one of the real strengths of what staff has put together is the grant application is one page. The end-of-year report is one page. Why is that important? A, less scary. B, easier to translate without, the more words you put out there, the more opportunity there is for a word to be wrong or a word to be confusing, so keeping it simple minimizes the risk of there being an issue. The third thing I'd point out is that, um, you know, these applications are not going to just go to some kind of vacuum somewhere. It's going to come to the Economic Development Committee. You know, Councilmember Reyes, Martine and I are, we, you know, we keep our ear pretty close to the ground when it comes to our community. We're, and the other thing I'll say is that we have partners and they're in the room. And the partners helped us with the survey. When there was some challenges with the survey, as the mayor pointed out, uh, we got some help there. And I, I know our partners are going to want to be there for our community, to help our community and to make sure that our businesses can be successful. So, you know, if we pick up a problem with the number of applications or a number of applications seem to have the same challenge at the committee, we can kind of try and address that directly with the applicants in the room and see if we can address it there. If you have to make some kind of minor change, you can, and that would slightly delay, delay our, our timeline. But I, I think that regardless of, But I think that regardless of how the program is rolled out, the first time you do something, there's going to be challenges. You're going to try and you're going to learn. And then we'll make adjustments. And what I'm excited about is the opportunity to get some help out there for folks who could really use it and to get that out there sooner rather than later. I really appreciated my colleagues' questions about process and making sure that we have process in mind. I think we do. And I think having a shorter, simpler application is a great start. But we have partners that can help, and I'm looking forward to partnering with them.
Councilmember Caston.
Councilmember Caston, I believe your microphone is off.
What I was saying is kind of tap the brakes a little on the open-for-business campaign as far as expanding it or doing more than what's done right now, which is just using our own social media platforms, I gather. And the point is, is that, well, two things. Number one is, if you're doing paid advertising and so forth, you have to know who you're targeting. You have to know, are we going for visitors? Are we going for residents? Are we going, if it's residents, are we going for people to tell them about Santa Cruz Market? What is it that we're hoping to accomplish? Who are we going after? And, you know, you have to, there has to be a strategy to it, not just kind of, let's just spend money and blanket, you know, a region. You want to then evaluate, is it accomplishing things? So, I guess I would want to understand what we're doing better before we spend money on it. Have some sort of strategy in mind. And, you know, is it bringing in visitors from out of the area? Or are residents in the area not going to Old Town? They're going somewhere else to shop for basic things. So, I guess before we kind of talk about expanding it, to think it through as much as possible. As far as the next one, I want to agree with, I think, most of my colleagues, particularly the recently deposed Mayor Protem. Who? But in that, you know, I agree with Councilmember Kiriakko that it isn't an especially challenging application. But having said that, if people, you know, we're more accustomed to doing these things, where, you know, it is something, especially if you're, you know, in any way language-challenged, that it's unfamiliar, and having some sort of hand-holding. I remember when I first got here, people talking about doing city permits. And they actually said Galita, especially compared to Santa Barbara, was a good place to, was really kind of business-friendly because Jaime Valdez, sitting in the audience, was there to help them with it. And they specifically cited his kind of hand-holding to help people navigate the process, the permitting process. So, I think that, you know, having some ability to have somebody kind of coach you or give you answers or help people just going through it. And it might be you. And I'm not, so, you know, it's perfectly fine if you're there. But to anticipate that, you know, part of this is going to be reaching out and making sure, answering questions and helping people go through it and encouraging them. And then the other, so that was, you know, I was agreeing on the grant writing, giving that hand-holding. But the other thing I wanted to talk about was, and I tried to talk about, but probably muddled it a little, is with respect to technical assistance to make sure as much as we can that the grant succeeds, that it is going to actually have the desired effect. So, whether it's financial or whether it's promotional or whatever it is, how can we, you know, give people the tools? Give, here is experience that other cities have used, or here, you know, good opportunities. I don't know, something to, as much as we can, we want this not, we're not just going through the motions. We want to actually see success. We want to actually see more customers. We want this to help those businesses. And so, if there is some sort of technical support that'll make better applications, not just for reporting at the end of the year, but help them get better, you know, increase their business. That's what we want. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we should see if there's any public speakers.
I do have two speaker slips. And if any members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak, please raise your hand and we'll call on you. Our first speaker in person is Jaclyninda.
Mayor, Council. My name is Jaclyn and I'm here on behalf of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. And yes, we participated in helping the city launch their survey. We submitted seventy-one of those surveys of the eighty-two that you received. So, we definitely have firsthand experience as to how quickly we can get and generate information with partnership. Going back to the amount set by the POP grant, I think POP is definitely the right way to go. It's very important for the collaboration, though, to also be very present. There are several factors right now in our community that are impacting not only Old Town, but all of our majority-minority protected businesses. And that's the change in federal administration and how that causes ripple effects in smaller neighborhoods where people might not want to go out and shop and participate. So, to the point, the third party, to me, of course, is the Hispanic Chamber. It's the easiest, lowest-hanging fruit to be able to not only create the workshops, but also the technical assistance and then provide the support to gather our community members, our business owners, in coming up with different ways that they can collaborate and create these grants and submit them, support them, and get them through that process. Now, the other part that's important for, to know is that, yes, there's a lot of conversations about maybe Shop Evertown. There's ideas of bringing back the swap meet that used to be thriving in Galita Old Town. All of these different things can come cohesively together in a workshop format very quickly together within the timeline that is proposed so that those projects could come in front of the committee. It's very important that if we do develop a workshop and we do become that third party that participates and facilitates this process, that we do it hand-in-hand with the city so that it looks and feels like we're uniting in an effort to create sustainability within the construction period. It is even more so important when it comes to the responsiveness of it. For example, with the license fees. The reason why business owners were talking about license fees is because those were the, most of the costs that were going to be implemented at the beginning of January. And those fees are now things that have already been paid out during the time of the construction. So, there's many different things that we can work on together. I don't believe that we need more time. I think this is the timeline that was proposed is a perfectly good timeline. And we have the technical skills. We also have the ability to get our business owners together in creating the proposals that need to come forth within the timeline. Of course, working with the council, working with the city to create workshops, be able to button down those applications, and then support those businesses through the process of actually innovating, implementing, and then gathering the reports at the end of that process.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kristin Miller.
Good evening, Mayor Perotti and members of the council. I'm Kristin Miller, President and CEO of the Santa Barbara South Coast Chamber of Commerce, a premier economic development organization representing eight hundred fifty members and seventy-five thousand jobs in the region. We are huge fans of the city's economic development strategic plan. Thank you to the city council and staff for creating and implementing an economic development plan and for the robust community involvement that informed this work. We're excited to see the actions tonight for the Pride of Place grant program, and we're very supportive of that. My comments are more on the overall economic development for Galita. These are two of the first steps the city has taken. But twenty-two, but 2025 marks the third year of our five-year plan. And we do feel it's time to plan for the implementation of the rest of the initiatives that will improve the local economy and jobs in Galita citywide. Work has begun this year, as you've seen, with a hundred thousand dollar budget investment to support three of the very important initiatives. A branding campaign to position Galita as a technology and innovation hub. Support for Old Town placemaking. And strengthening business support throughout the city. The Child Care Initiative received two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of investment last year, and we fully support that. We would like to see that matched with two hundred and fifty thousand for an economic development contract with the chamber to push forward on implementing other initiatives in the plan, again, citywide. In addition, I just want to highlight strong support for one of the strategic initiatives that's not on the agenda tonight, but that calls for a publicly-backed equity investment fund. This would provide access to capital for the future high-growth startups, which are critical to building our competitive local entrepreneurial ecosystem. And setting up that fund with a one-time investment of five hundred thousand dollars can provide ongoing programs as the fund grows itself over time. Lastly, we're excited to focus on the work already begun to amplify the message about Techtopia in Galita. The timing is now to establish Galita as a significant technology hub between the Silicon Valley and San Diego. It's our moment to shine as Google's world-changing quantum computing and new Willow chip move forward in our backyard, along with their plans to expand in the Cabrillo Business Park. This is something the city and the chamber could leverage to yield benefit from the economic boost to the entire community. Galita is already the shining star in our region for having an economic development plan. We are here to help move to the next steps forward in this effort so that the next, your next two-year budget reflects significant investment in these core initiatives in addition to what you've talked about tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we have no additional public speakers.
Okay, back to council.
I appreciated, oh, sorry.
Please go ahead, Councilmember Kiriakko.
I didn't see anyone else going for the mic. I appreciated the public comment from both commenters. I think, you know, tonight, for what we're agendized for and where my focus is, is really trying to get through with getting the Pride of Place grant up and running, not letting the perfect beat the enemy of the good. Let, you know, I think staff has heard our comments. I think they know they want a simple application process. They want technical assistance. Council wants us to work with our partners and, you know, get going on this because the help is needed. And then I think that we will have time as we have another Economic Development Committee meeting, as we start to get into our work plan, as we start to get into our budget. You know, that would probably be the appropriate time to then have discussions about, you know, now that we finally, after a couple of years of not having the full sales tax or not having any of the sales tax during the economic development plan, now that we're starting to actually have that up and running, seeing where could we make the right investments and targeted investments, while recognizing that there is a new reality out there, which is there's a change administration. I don't want to get too political, but we don't know what that's going to mean for grants that have been promised but not yet paid, reimbursements that have been requested but not yet paid. We don't know how California is going to be treated. We don't know how Galita is going to be treated. So, I do think there needs to be an element of prudence here as we move forward. You know, I think we need to make these investments and I think we need to be really strategic. But, you know, I want to, I want to implement the economic development strategic plan robustly. But I also want to make sure that we're being strategic and careful and that we're really talking to the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Yes, I'm supportive of the proposal as presented and with sort of, with the commentary that the, our fellow council members have given. I would just stress that to the extent that the city, you know, within current budget and current resources can continue, you know, to get the word out about, you know, how can, how can people get to Old Town? Where can people park? Because, you know, there is still the perception that it's difficult to get through Old Town. And I know that because I recently knocked on a lot of doors in my neighborhood. And, and these issues, you know, even out in Western Galita, were the, were the number-two issue that I heard at the door. So, I think I really want this to be successful and I don't want businesses investing this money or beautifying and doing all this stuff and not having people show up. So, I would just really stress that element. I know MTD is also a great partner. I love the, I love MTD. Yay, Galita Express. But, so I would just emphasize that, that I think that's an important component for, for success, at least as it relates to our residents and to the extent that we're targeting Galita residents, that our own people know where to go to find out about all these cool things. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Caston.
Yeah, I guess two things. One is.
Is your mic on?
Oh, yeah, it is. I'm just not close enough to it. One is MTD. I just went today to find a bus pass for my son. And the only place in Galita to buy a bus pass is at the community center, and it's, and it's broken. And so, I went to UCSB to get it. But, you know, if there are people who are elderly, they don't have a car, or they're disabled, it's really inconvenient. And there should be, and, you know, a way to buy it online, to have an app or something, instead of going to the one place in the city of Galita. I think MTD can do better than that. That wasn't, that was just an aside. That was my gripe for spending, wandering around UCSB to get a bus pass. I sort of forgot the other point.
I just will jump in and say, Councilmember Caston, they used to sell bus passes. I know I'm not in touch with the school districts like I used to be, but especially the high school. They really wanted kids to take, you know, students to take the bus so that they don't have an issue with traffic. They're not selling them anymore?
No, well, right now, I don't know how it was, but right now, the high school, they use MTD. They don't use like Galita Union School District buses.
No, no, the high school would sell them.
No, they, they have to go, they don't have access to bus passes at the school, at Dos Pueblos.
Well, I'll have to talk to.
That's why I was wandering around.
I'll have to talk to MTD about that.
Yes, yeah, that's good. And I remember, the other thing I was going to talk about is something, and maybe this is the twenty-five thousand in the future or something like that or something else, but parking, that long-term parking that you mentioned, that we've had discussions before, I believe, about acting as, and acting to enable people who have surplus parking behind their buildings and so forth to open that up for other businesses for long-term parking and to explore something like that, to act as a clearinghouse or, you know, a. Anyway, something, that it's something we can talk about and, because I think it is probably an issue. And the reason it's relevant and goes to your point in part two is that if people are parking on the street and moving their cars every ninety minutes, that's a lot of cars that are getting in the way. And if we actually could move them and they could park for an extended period off the pollister, that would reduce a lot of, you know, cars flowing around. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kiriakko.
Just real quickly, as the son of a former MTD mechanic, I can tell you that if you let them know, they're real quick to deal with those issues. We had an issue when the community center was closed, where the vending machine for the bus passes was in the community center and the community center was locked. MTD moved very quickly to put that vending machine in the back. You just have to let them know. So, I have already text-messaged their government relations person and said, hey, I heard this. So, from, from your lips to MTD's ears. And the other thing I'll say is about the parking. As someone that's lived in Old Town for years and worked in Old Town, God, my first job in Old Town, I was, I wasn't even twenty yet. People like, particularly the customers in Old Town, a lot of whom are elderly. If they're driving into Old Town, a lot of them tend to be elderly. They don't want to park two blocks away in a lot. They don't want to block, they don't want to park three blocks away. They want to park like they have always been able to do, right in front of their store. And so, I, we can do a lot of education about the lots, and I hope we do. And I hope we improve the usage of those lots. But I think to something the mayor said earlier, we may want to consider, when we get to our work plan, if not sooner, looking at perhaps designating one of the lots as an employee lot, maybe the one. lot, maybe the one at Hollister in Orange. I think that would get a lot of support. But there's no perfect solution. If you talk to the people, you know, I won't name individual businesses, but there's one business right off of Mandarin, they really want their employees to park right in front of their store because they have inventory that they store in their vehicle and they want to be able to keep an eye on it. So each individual business has individual challenges and if you try to solve everybody's individual problem, you won't solve everybody's problem. So I think we'll do the best we can here, recognizing that we're hearing things at the door, we're hearing, you know, I hear a lot of things at the door in Old Town, too. I did a lot of walking this year, too. And you hear a lot of different things. So I've appreciated all the comments here. But yeah, I think, I think we need a really wide-ranging, robust effort when it comes to educating the community about parking and a few other issues.
I was just going to clarify. I was referring to, let's say there's a business that has parking behind their business and oftentimes customers aren't using those, you'd have to know about that. And so there are some lots that are just underutilized and they might want to make it available for a price to a business that wants space for employees. And if we could be, sort of help be an intermediary to enable, you know, this business to talk to that business, win-win.
I think we might have a grant program for that.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion. Who's prepared to do that?
I'll move it as recommended.
I'll second. Both A and B?
A and B.
Do you want to read it?
I think.
I'm looking.
I got to get there.
Mr. Rosen's giving us the look.
Do I, do I read the one that's on the PowerPoint or in the staff report?
The one council member on the screen would...
The one on the PowerPoint. I recommend that we initiate, this is very literate, we, I recommend that, I'll move that we initiate the Old Town Initiative Pride of Place Grant Program and provide direction to staff on any other economic development initiatives, which we have done. And I'll recommend that we also find that the Old Town Pride of Place Grant Program is not a gift of public funds.
And I'll second.
Okay. A roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers, please remember to lock in your votes. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerryako?
Aye.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Pro tempore Kasdan?
Aye.
And Mayor Brody?
Aye. Ayes have it. All right. We're going to take a 10-minute break. Thank you, everyone. Okay, let's bring this meeting back to order.
Our next item is Item C3, Selection of City Council Representatives to Regional Agencies and City Council Subcommittee.
So, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm here tonight with Blake Markham, our public records specialist, who's assisted me in this report and updated all the tables for us. So in preparation for this item tonight, what we did is that we provided current list of appointments to all of our council members for regional standing and ad hoc. Councils express their requests for regional standing and ad hoc. We populated the forms, brought it to our mayor for consideration of regional assignments. We incorporated all councils' requests for standing and ad hoc city council bodies and those are incorporated as attachments one, two, and three. But before you get started tonight, I just want to remind you in the public, there's a different process for regional appointments than there is for city council standing committees or ad hoc committees. So for the regional appointments, back in 2020, this, this city had adopted the Government Code Section 40605. We've incorporated that into our Galita Municipal Code. Whereas for regional appointments, the mayor makes the appointments to regional assignments, but that the council has to ratify those. And for internal standing and ad hoc appointments, the council as a whole review and select that. So again, those are incorporated as the attachments one, two, and three. The other thing that I wanted to point out is that city council subcommittees and standing and ad hoc, those are less than a quorum, so there's two members. As you go through those forms here, I've noticed that a couple of those, there's a handful of areas where there's only one council interest, so we have to have two. So go through those to make sure we have two. The other thing is, these are, as a reminder, we do this major review and look at right after an election and then we look at it again, possibly the year after. But these are for two-year, two-year terms unless we have to change something. So unless there's any questions from the council, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and get started.
Okay, ready? Okay, so I was thinking since, you know, I was thinking we'd start with the regional, obviously, and, and I think we should go one by one, but not spend a whole lot of time on it. So the first one is Beach Erosion Authority for Clean Oceans, Beacon. That was in years past. Kyle Richards was on that and I've selected, if that works for her, Councilmember Smith and James Kerryako as the alternate. Did you, is there, if there wants to be a switch?
Yeah, so, so I...
Were you the alternate?
I was the alternate for all of Kyle's term and, God, he only missed, I think, two meetings, so I very rarely got to participate. I had intended to select Beacon, but, but did not, so I'm not on the list where it says member interest. And I noted that Councilmember Kasdan had selected interest, so, so I'm, well, I was just going to say, I'm, I'm fine with whatever, whatever the mayor wants to do. I had, I had hoped to do the primary, but I also recognize, I didn't check it and it's also your appointment, so. So you'll do whatever you want to do there and I'm not going to fuss.
Well, we could switch if it's all right with Councilmember Smith. I would put you as the alternate and I didn't realize that Councilmember Kerryako was the alternate before. Usually that kind of happens, you move, once you're an alternate, if you want to move up to the primary. It doesn't always happen like that.
It's also kind of my fault because even though I was the alternate, I didn't check it off.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm, I think I'm open to that. I think the only other, I just want to be mindful about sharing the load because I think the only one I'm listed as the lead is one where there's two teleconference meetings, so I just...
No, it's in Carpinteria.
No, oh, no, I was just thinking about a different one, but in any case.
So would you be willing to let Councilmember Kasdan be?
I don't know. I'll let Kerryako do it.
Well, I have...
If she wants to stay on, that's fine.
But he would be the primary?
I'll let you guys decide.
So are you, are you thinking you don't want to be the alternate?
That's fine. I'm just, I'm only mindful that I'm not listed as the primary.
Okay, oh, got it, got it. Okay.
Any other where there's an in-person meeting required.
So there's also...
So you're saying you would like to be the primary?
You could, so the next one is JPIA and that has very little responsibility except once a year there's a meeting and then once a year they have a kind of a cool conference that you can go to and learn, learn cool stuff if you're interested in traveling and learning cool stuff.
If, you were saying you're not the primary on anything else and so you, you're inclined to be the primary here. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I guess to the extent that I would like to be the primary on at least one...
Okay, well, we'll find one for you to be the primary.
Okay, fair enough.
I'm happy to give you one.
Me, too. Okay, so we have Kerryako as the primary and Councilmember Smith as the alternate. Okay. There was no one that put their name down for this one, so I put Councilmember Kerryako and myself.
You don't have JPIA?
Yeah. No one wanted it, no one ever.
So I've been on it, so they have meetings monthly, but they're not required, of the executive committee, but you're not required to attend. There's one meeting per year that is a good meeting to go to and where it is, it is good to have. that is a good meeting to go to, and where it is, it is good to have a representative there, and I believe it's in July. It says, actually, on the meeting schedule, July. So, there's really just the one kind of commitment, one day per year, that you really need to go, or should go.
Are you saying you don't want to be the primary?
I guess what I'm saying is, this might be an opportunity for Councilmember Smith to jump in, if she wanted to be primary someplace. You kind of get out of it when you put into it. You could either do it monthly, or you could do it once a year.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, and you're a lawyer. It might be a good thing.
Well, actually, and given all the fire stuff, maybe this is more relevant or more, you know, topical.
Well, it plays into not just fire things, but it also plays to, you know, whenever the city gets a claim and other things.
And do you want, would you like to be the alternate then?
Sure.
Okay, okay.
Anything to help the mayor.
Okay, that helps. Okay, perfect, all right. Center for Urban Agriculture?
If I might, I'm happy to do, to have Luce be the primary, but I would propose, even though it says no alternate needed, I would propose to call myself an alternate, just so I can communicate.
Will they, will they allow that? When I say they don't-
They don't have any meetings.
They have not met.
So, they're fine.
I hope they start up, but I'm, I would imagine they'd be okay with-
Well, we can put it down and see when, okay.
And then I have someone to keep updated.
Yeah, I think, I'd like to talk about it.
Okay. Central Coast Community Energy, 3CE. You would like to do that?
I would.
Great, that's really great, okay. Perfect. One page down, out of 100, no. Communify?
Think I was the only one that applied?
Yeah, and you've been doing it.
And I'm actually the chair of the show.
Oh, well, then you should stay.
I should probably stay.
I mean, if you didn't want to do it, I would do it, but I'd be, but I knew you would have that role.
Mayor Proton Park, Kasdan, your microphone is still off.
I bet.
So, that's good? We're good with Carriaco staying as the primary? Okay. Foundation for Gersh Park. That was, who put their name in there? Stuart Kasdan and Carriaco.
I put in for it, and I love that, I love that organization, and I love that park, but it's also in the Councilmember Kasdan's district.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I mean-
It should be Stuart.
But I, I, if you want it, you had asked for it last time, and it, yes, it's, yeah, I remember. I debated it in my head last time, but I chose especially because it is in the district, but I'm happy if you'd like to do it.
Do you want to do it?
Why don't you do it one more year, one more two-year term?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, then, Gleana Valley Community Center. Do they even meet? Are they meeting?
You want the short version or the long version?
Short.
I have not been notified of any meetings in the very recent or not-so-recent past.
Okay, so, do you want to stay with that?
Sure, sure, why not?
Okay. Okay, Regional Integrated Waste Management Reporting Authority.
I'm happy. I don't know if I put down.
No one put anything down.
You can add me, that's fine.
Good, thank you.
I don't think we've met, though. I don't, I don't know if it's ever met, so it's not a huge burden.
If you can't remember, it probably hasn't. Okay. Santa Barbara Air, APCD, Air Pollution Control District. There's quite an interest here. I, typically, when you are part of SB CAG, mostly then you stay on Air Pollution Control, because they're, you don't have to, but they also meet right after, and it's every other month, but they meet right after SB CAG. And, and they already put me, and some of these regional agencies have other subcommittees, and they've already put me on two subcommittees. So, I think I'm going to stay on that, unless you want an additional workload on this one. But you could be the alternate, that'd be great. Okay. Okay. And Santa Barbara Airport Commission?
I would like to do that. Who else?
Councilmember Smith, you want to be on there as an alternate? Okay.
Yes, I'm agreeable.
Santa Barbara SB CAG, yes, I'm doing that. And then you'd like to be the-
I'd love that.
Okay. And they just put me on LoSan.
That was very exciting.
I know.
Some of us were watching.
Yeah. Oh, you were?
You were.
Okay. Santa Barbara MTD. I've been on there for a long time, I just realized. I just don't know how they, I think it's, is it appointed by this, because they just, my, my term doesn't end like now.
Yeah.
So, do I have to wait till it ends? And I should have asked today, but, you know, I didn't make it to the meeting today because of my car.
Oh, yes, each board member has a four-year term. So, each board member has a four-year term?
And, okay. Well, I could look into that a little bit more, and if nobody else wanted it, so maybe I'll just stay there.
It's one that I very much want, but not right now.
I mean, I guess I just assumed it was one of yours.
Oh, no, you'll give them a hard time about the passes.
You know, but I, I just assumed it was a mayor thing.
No, no, it doesn't have to be a mayor thing.
Okay, well, you could see-
I'll find out. I need to look into that. Okay. South Coast Affordable Housing Task Force. Everybody wanted it. You've been doing it for a while?
Yeah, I'm willing to cede. I have been doing it for quite a while, so I'll, I'll give up my, my place and-
Councilmember Smith, would you like to be the primary on that one? Let's see, when do they meet? Fourth Thursday?
And you can walk to the meetings.
They used, I don't, do they still meet at the county offices?
No, they meet, they meet down, down Santa Barbara.
They used to, but listed here, it says county office.
It's Senior Center.
I'm looking at Mr. Valdez, because he was fabulous at running these meetings and doing the minutes, and we had the most participation. I loved those meetings, and it was because of this guy.
There's a space, there's a space, I think it's on Laguna. It's, it's right downtown. It's a, it's a city, I think it's a city housing authority, and they have a conference room.
Yeah, so-
We've met in Buellton, too.
Depending on who the chair is for that task group, their staff is the one who will staff it, and then be the host for it, and they'll rotate it. So, sometimes it'd be at the county housing authority, I think off of Garden, or maybe it was Laguna, maybe in Garden. We used to do it here at City Hall. City of Santa Barbara would do it, yeah. So, it was quarterly, and then they, during COVID, they moved it to, obviously, all Zoom. But it's, should be quarterly, it used to be on a fourth Thursday or something like that. And, yeah, it's pretty, pretty well-attended. I think the lunch gets it-
Yeah, it is.
I'm in.
You're in, okay.
And actually, they're very flexible about remote participation, too.
Or become the chair, and then you can decide where they meet.
But it needs, it needs an alternate. Who wants to be the alternate?
I'm also right by there at my work.
If you'd like to do that.
Okay.
South Coast Youth Safety Partnership. I have James Carriaco, Councilmember Carriaco, because you're the only one that put your name, and you've been on that.
I'm also, yeah, I've also been the chair of that one since Kathy Maria left. I'm trying to get Oscar Gutierrez to take over his chair.
Oh.
Have Santa Barbara to have a turn.
Okay. For now, I'll put you down, and there's no alternate needed?
I would still be a member, just top chair.
Oh, okay. Southern California Edison Government Advisory Panel. I have James Carriaco that was interested in it, and Luc Reyes Martin, and Jennifer.
I think Jennifer's good.
And it's, and it's on teleconference. Huh. Would you like that one? You'd be the primary. Now you're getting a lot of primaries.
Yeah, so I'm flexible either way. I'm happy to do it, but Luce, I don't know.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay.
Okay. Visit Santa Barbara Board of Directors, Lizon. So, we have, and you've been doing it, right?
Yeah, I really enjoy it.
And you're the alternate?
I think she's missed one meeting in two years.
Okay, so, should we leave that the same? Are you okay with that, too?
It is nice when it's right by your office.
Stuart, while it is right by my office, if you'd really like that one, I'd be happy to defer to you. I just, I'm just wondering.
I know you've, you've been, you've attended those meetings even as a, as a non-official representative, so you might as well be official.
Okay, moving on to standing. This is where I have no authority, so it's going to be a free-for-all. Okay. Economic Development and Revitalization Standing Committee. Right now, it's James Carriaco and Luc Reyes Martin. I see that Stuart Kasdan has her name in there, but they've been doing it, so I would... Someone speak.
I would like to stay on.
Okay.
I would also like to stay on, and, you know, it's up to the council.
Would you then come, if you were to get on this, would you get off, would you, the Human Services Committee?
Well, let's deal with one at a time.
I know.
I mean-
I, you know, I had put in for Human Services, but I'll gladly back out on Human Services. I think there were three people asking.
Yeah.
I mean, I-
This is like, this is always such a hard one. Everybody wants it, and, and I will admit, I always admit my mistakes. I made a mistake a while ago, and, but I always liked the idea of current members, especially if they're in the middle of doing something, to stay on, and that was my mistake, and I apologize for that.
Now, let's move on.
Okay, all right. Okay, Energy and Green Issues Standing Committee.
Who wants to join me?
It's, same two. Yeah, so it's, oh, wait, it was Kyle.
No.
He was there.
He was the primary. And so, I have Luce and James. I don't think-
Is that good?
Who wants to be, oh, I guess it's just two members, okay. Okay, Finance Audit Standing Committee. I have Stuart Kasdan, and it was Kyle, but-
Jennifer.
Jennifer, do you want to be on that one?
Yes.
Okay. Do, okay, it's two members, so Jennifer Smith. Okay. Gleana Beach Park Standing Committee, does that meet?
It met about four years ago. Kyle and I were on it, something like that. We had one, one meeting, something like that, and that's the last time we met.
It may meet again now that Elwood's opening. That's used to where you used to have it, right?
I put in for it, or I added my name, because it was a memorable four years ago, that I enjoyed that experience of my one-day meet.
We need one more. I have a feeling that's going to come up.
I'd be interested in that.
Okay.
I was sort of just wondering about some of the reasons of its, the committee's existence.
For the Gleana Beach Standing Committee?
As in-
I'm trying to remember how we started.
Can I make a comment that might be helpful? The one, the one thing we might, we might think about is, should it be the two people that are part of Beacon talking about Gleana Beach, because Gleana Beach and Beacon are so interrelated? And if it means switching up Beacon because you're, because you're really interested, I mean, I'd be happy to step off Beacon and let you go on, so you can be on the Gleana Beach one. But it just seems like you could create a Brown Act issue if your, Gleana Beach is in the news, and you're talking about it Beacon, but then there's another council member talking about it at a committee.
Well, the manner of operation description is specific to recreational. I don't know.
There's still a nexus to Beacon because of the Sandy Beach-
I think I remember Michael Bennett was on this for a long time, and I think there was, there was a conversation with the county that they were going to charge a fee to go into the park, and I think we-
Is that what it started?
I don't think it started for that, but that was one of the things that came up. Then there was some conversation that maybe they'd liked us to take on Gleana Beach. I mean, there's been, over the years, different topics, but, Mr. Valdez, can you help me out?
Yeah, I can recall a couple of different kind of intersections of policy and the city. So, one of them was what Mayor Prodey said about ideas about charging user fees for access. Another one that I remember was during the talks about managed retreat and what that would mean, and what was the city's role in saying those things of adding more sand back. And then I believe the last one had to do with, I'm trying to remember what it was, but they were just all tangential.
Was it the debris flow?
Yes, yes, that's what it was. What, when there was a need to remove debris-
They always use Gleana Beach.
Ended up targeting Gleana Beach, and so people felt it was a little insensitive to our, our contingency out here.
So, so I think we have it, though. We have Stuart, you want to stay on that?
Sure.
And then Luce, you want to stay on that? Okay.
Yeah.
Homelessness Issues and Standing Committee. I've been on it for a very, very long time, and I enjoy it, but I'm also thinking sometimes fresh set of eyes might be beneficial. So, I see, I mean, it's up to all of us. I'm not saying where you should go. Get in trouble again.
I know there's been a lot of challenges in Stuart's district. I'd be happy to defer to Stuart on my interest.
I'm already on the committee. Am I going to get, am I going to get kicked off the committee again?
No, 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 no. Who you want to be with? Do you want to continue being with me, or do you want to-
I'll leave that to you guys to decide.
So, it's myself on there, Stuart, Jennifer Smith would like it, and James Carriaco.
I'll withdraw.
You'll withdraw? Okay.
I'm trying to wrap my head around about, like, how many everybody has, but, you know, the work aligns a lot with, with my work that I do in my day work, even though in my work, there's a little more of a focus on the homelessness prevention side. So, it just certainly informs my interest.
And then who else? And then you. Me. Do you think you're taking on too much? I mean, you're, I want to be sensitive to that.
Yes, I do, too. Take a peek. Or do we want to put a pin in this one and circle back?
They, to this, and only one of us can go. It's called a RAP meeting. It's every Monday at nine. We alternate between Stuart and I, and then we have our Housing, Homelessness Committee meeting here at the city. How often do we meet on that? It's as needed, right, pretty much?
Yeah.
That's fine. Paula, I'm mindful that, I know you, how passionate you are on this. So, I'm willing to defer.
Okay. So, it's Paula and Stuart. Okay, moving on to next page. Human Services Standing Committee. We have- We have, I'm going to take my name off of it because I just, with low sand, I'm going to try and downsize here a little bit. So I have James Carriaco and Stuart Kazdin.
So I would actually like to withdraw on this one. I've taken a job that could put me in a position where I'd have to defer at the committee level. And so a committee with one person talking about a specific line item would be awkward.
Okay.
So, and I talked to our city attorney about it, and we both agreed that that was probably the best move.
You might like this, Jennifer. This might be.
And if you feel like.
It seems to touch upon.
I was about to say, I think we have three of us who work with nonprofits here.
Luz was saying that if you thought it was a long.
Luz might be the safest, actually, of the three.
Are you interested in it, or do you feel like it's better to hold off on this one?
I think it'd be better for me to hold off.
I'm happy to serve on that with Stuart.
Okay. Stand, Name Standing Committee. We have, only person that said they wanted to be on it is Stuart.
We've met twice in six years or eight years, so it's not a heavy workload.
But the meetings were lively.
Oh, you had Chris Potter, yeah.
Right.
And we also had, we also had the Mariposa.
Right, naming the.
So do you want to stay on it, then?
I'm happy to. I'm trying to also be cognizant of the fact that other people should have a chance.
No one else checked that?
Okay, I'll stay on.
Oops. Okay. Ordinance Committee. And they probably meet once a quarter, if necessary. And it's right now, the same, it would be the same, no? Who said Stuart wanted to be on it, and?
Jennifer.
Jennifer.
I didn't, I had been on it.
But because Kyle had been on it.
And I had been on it, too, and I kind of hopefully didn't apply, hoping that the attorney of us would go for it. Thinking it might be a good idea to have an attorney on the ordinance committee.
Yeah, that's true.
Especially she's looking for things to do and wants to carry the load.
You're good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not a heavy load. It's, it's. No, I mean, it's ad hoc. We did tobacco, dog leash, and cars, and some oversized vehicles.
Huh, those are important.
Oh, and noise? I remember that one.
They do.
Oh, I remember noise in Old Town. That was like, wasn't there an issue with noise? Anyway, okay, so I have Stuart Kazdin and Jennifer Smith. Public Safety, I want to stay on that one. Do you want to stay on that one? Okay, so we'll leave that the same.
I was worried, nobody else could.
I don't know why I didn't check that.
I was being mic.
How many years did I wait to get on it?
I know, I was surprised.
Town and Gown Standing Committee.
So we, so we have, so we have not met, I've been on that one, and we have not met since things got interesting between us and the university.
I will say, one of the reasons I was really interested in this one is I was invited to provide input on the new chancellor search at UCSB. And one of the main things I advocated for was the, this kind of relationship starting up again, a town and gown. I said that was very important. So I'd like to.
I'm happy to give up my spot.
Okay, so you want to stay on it, Stuart?
Although I think there were.
Am I on it?
Yeah.
But I think Jennifer was also interested.
Oh, I expressed interest.
If Jennifer would like it, she can have it.
I'm an alumni, former employee.
Yeah.
Married to another alumni, lots of connections.
Yeah. So how about Luz Reyes Martin and Stuart Kazdin?
No, 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 Jennifer.
Oh, okay.
And, and by the way, they also serve food.
Okay.
I'm just picking the food ones, no.
Oh, Watershed and Waste Reduction Standing Committee.
I'm the only one who put in for it.
I know.
But it's supposed to have two, I believe.
Right, it says two. I don't know, I can't do it. Does anybody else want it? It has to have two.
You know, I just wanted to mention on a side note that before I got involved with city stuff, I had no idea what town and gown referenced. I hadn't even been aware of the expression, so I just, I just put that out there in terms of for the general public.
That's good.
This is a learning experience.
What does that mean?
I'm happy to serve on the watershed one.
Okay.
Otherwise, we're going to need to go to alumni and ask Kyle what he's doing.
Okay, and then the next one should go really fast. Let's see. Fire Station 10, we've got current members, Stuart Kazdin and Luz Reyes Martin. And Jennifer wanted that as well, but.
Just to jump in, I know that we are in somewhat in the middle of kind of the dialogue with county fire, but I think it's really important for Councilmember Smith to be on this committee since it's in her immediate area. So I will bow out.
Okay. So, and you still want to be on it?
Yes, I do.
I think it should be one of the three down at the end over there, the Westerners.
I know, I thought about it. Legislative Issues Ad hoc is usually the mayor and the mayor pro tem. And Personnel Committee is usually the mayor and the mayor pro tem. So we've got those taken care of. Revenue Neutrality Act. It's you and I, we have been on it, and everybody wanted a piece of that except you. Do you want to stay on?
Sure.
I'm willing to defer. I think it's a reflection of the strength about how we feel about it.
Okay. Diversity Equity Inclusion Plan Committee. Luz Reyes Martin right now, and James Carriaco, stay on.
I'm happy to stay on. I also want to be mindful that we have someone that works in a lot of those spaces down at the end who's also a lawyer. If you want to take it, I'd be happy to defer to you, Jennifer.
I'm worried about how many you're taking. Did you add them up? I'm worried for you. Especially the first.
Yeah, I'm willing to defer on this one.
Okay.
Okay, then we're done.
Mayor, could I just request the last two, just to confirm the members, both for Revenue Neutrality and the DEI committees?
Revenue Neutrality was myself and Stuart. And Diversity Equity and Inclusion, Luz Reyes Martin, and James Carriaco. Got it?
And does the clerk's team feel you have all the other ones listed? Okay, wonderful.
We have them all, thank you.
I have it all written down. Okay. Do we need to make a motion on this one? Yes. Yo. Do we need speakers if we?
Mayor, one moment, please.
Uh-oh, did I miss one?
Madam Mayor, members of the councils, so Blake just mentioned to me, on the Regional Integrated Waste Management, it does say under the alternate section, not applicable, but in their manner of operation, it does call out a primary and alternate required.
Which one is this one?
That is on the regional agency. It's on page two. Regional Integrated Waste Management Reporting Authority.
I got to go back all the way.
If I might make a suggestion, that at least the topic is related to stuff that comes up in the watershed and waste management. And so if you want to, so add Luz.
That works for me.
And it doesn't meet, so it's not a big burden.
But is there food?
But is there food?
Yeah.
Okay, then we got it. Good catch.
Thank you.
Okay. So looking for a motion to approve my appointments and then confirm membership on the city councils.
So moved?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers, please remember to lock in your votes. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Carriaco?
Aye.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Porcasdin? And Mayor Prodey?
Aye. I just have it.
Okay. All right, do we have any council comments or standing committee? What, we do?
Our next item is Item C4, Proposed First Amendment to City Manager Employment Agreement.
I was ready to go home. Okay.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. We have one remaining item this evening. It's a proposed First Amendment to the city manager, Mr. Nisbet's employment agreement. So the information regarding that First Amendment is contained in the staff report. I did want to note, under the Brown Act, Government Code 54953, C3, there is a requirement that before the council take action on the proposed amendment, I do an oral summary of any salary schedule or fringe benefits that have changed since the time of the last appointment. So for the public, the information regarding Robert's initial contract is within the 2022 agreement that's included as an attachment. And for purposes of the oral report, the only change contemplated by the First Amendment is a merit salary increase that would increase Mr. Nisbet's current hourly rate from 147.70 to 159.65 for a total base salary of $332,081.36. All other fringe benefits and existing employee benefits remain the same as set forth in the amendment. And there is a resolution as well effectuating the intent of that amendment within the staff report. And I'm available for any questions.
Questions from council? No questions? Okay. I'm going to make, I'd like to just thank Mr. Nisbet.
Oh, apologies, ma'am, I would recommend a public comment just in case we have anyone present.
I don't have any speaker slips, but if any members of the Zoom webinar wishes to speak, please raise your hand and we'll call on you. And there are no hands raised.
Okay. Well, I'll start with saying thank you for all your hard work. We know you work hard and we really appreciate it. So who would like to make the motion?
I'm happy to make the motion. Do we need to read the whole thing?
I would just recommend referencing the adoption by name.
No worries. So I move, we adopt Resolution Number 25, next in line, entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Guelita, California, Approving the First Amendment to the Employment Agreement Between the City of Guelita and Robert Nisbet, Following an Oral Report by the Acting City Attorney, Summarizing the Salary Schedules or Compensation Paid in the Form of Fringe Benefits Consistent with the Brown Act."
I'll second.
Okay.
Can we discuss the motion so we can say nice things?
Yeah, let's discuss the motion.
Mostly because I see him blushing and grinning and looking down and just overall seeming uncomfortable.
Make sure the camera is on him.
I just want to thank Mr. Nisbet for his work. I mean, just with the most recent San Jose Creek news, just another example of your work and the work of your team. Thank you for all you're doing and keep up the good work.
Ditto. Okay.
Good work and well deserved.
I'm going to wait for my thank you until after the vote.
Councilmembers, please remember to lock in your votes. Councilmember Smith?
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't involved in the review process that happened, but I did want to acknowledge that I've received the goals that were outlined for Mr. Nisbet, and I've really enjoyed our first few weeks working together, and I look forward to the coming year.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carriaco?
Aye.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Porcasdin?
Aye.
And Mayor Prodey?
Aye.
Okay. All right, now I can go, but it'll be brief. No, it's been a great two and a half years, and I appreciate the support. And I look forward to staying a lot longer, and it's great working with this council, and it's great working for the community of Guelita. It's been a wonderful ride, and thank you for your support and commitment to me and the staff.
I think you have a good team. You have a very good team. Yeah, thank you, okay. All right, where are we at now? Now we're at, are there any council comments or committees that you need to report on? I'm not seeing any, okay. Okay.
I just want to, something that was brought up earlier in, in, in public comment, I just want to acknowledge the passing of, of Robert Hernandez, the gentleman that passed away. In Old Town, it was obviously a shock to all of us. Richard Hernandez, I should say, not Robert. Richard Hernandez. I had the opportunity to attend the service with his family. Turned out I knew some of his family and had done work with some of his family. Just want to send our condolences to everyone there.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Rosen, do you have any closing remarks?
None for me.
Okay, all right, then, meetings adjourned.